Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's September 2nd, 2021 Public Meeting. First, Ms. Costa, can you please take the role?
It should be Mr. Staudigal taking the role today.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Staudigal, please forgive me.
Okay, Commissioner Trueblood.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner McMahon?
I'm here.
Commissioner May?
I'm here.
Commissioner Argo?
Present.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here, here.
Okay, and I don't believe Commissioner Chang has joined us yet, so, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cash is also here.
Sorry, Commissioner Cash?
I'm also here, I don't think you called my name.
Okay, thank you.
Well, noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is live streamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda is adopted as the order of business. And at this time, we will play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is defined by the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and the breathing and justice for all.
I would also like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 and variants now in our nation and around the world. Thank you. In response to the COVID-19 guidelines on public meetings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I would like to share how we will be conducting commission business. Votes by the commission will be conducted by roll call. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any questions or comments. During deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical difficulties. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda in the absence of a chair, the commission must nominate and vote on who should run the September meeting, which is the second agenda item. Is there a motion?
Arrington Dixon, so move.
And is, is there a second?
Second, Peter May.
So there is a motion that I, as vice chair, run our meeting today. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Staudigal, can you please take the vote by roll call? And commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Abstain.
The eyes have it, thank you fellow commissioners for electing me to run this online meeting. So Agenda Item 3 is the Report of the Vice Chair. General Services Administration Administrator Robin Carnahan has informed me of her alternates to the commission. Nina Alberg, Public Building Service Commissioner; Darren Blue, Regional Commissioner, Public Building Service; Mina Wright, Director, Office of Planning and Design Quality; and Kristi Tunstall-Williams, Deputy Director, Office of Planning and Design Quality. I look forward to our continuing collaboration with GSA. I also at this time want to extend my heartiest congratulations to Executive Director Acosta for being named as recipient of the 2021 Donald B. Meyer Public Service Award from the Washington Architectural Foundation and the DC Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. This prestigious award is very well-deserved recognition of Director Acosta, his body of work, and many accomplishments in service of others. So again, congratulations, Director Acosta. Commissioner Trueblood would like to say a few words now about the grand opening of the new Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridge. Commissioner Trueblood?
Thank you, Chairperson White. I just wanted to share with everyone, if you, in case you have not seen, that the new Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridge, which I believe came before NCPC, I don't know, a few years ago at this point, will be, have its grand opening this weekend. There is going to be a 5K run on Monday and some celebrations on Tuesday, I believe. So I would encourage you, for those who have not been following along, there's some, it's a beautiful bridge and obviously implements some of the work that NCPC has been doing over the last years and decades, obviously, with the, with the oval. So I encourage everyone to take a look and participate if you are interested in this event, if you're in the District of Columbia.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Improving the South Capitol Street corridor has been a longtime goal of NCPC. It's, it's thrilling to see the bridge opening. Commissioner Dixon, you wanted to make a comment?
Just that I can see the bridge from back of my house, and I'm going to look forward to walking across it. I'm very pleased, I'm hoping to be there to help cut the ribbon as one of the senior members of the commission and a lifelong resident of Anacostia.
Well, it's going to be an exciting day. Congratulations again on, on this bridge opening. It's, it was really great. So Agenda Item 4 is the Report of the Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have one personnel announcement. After 11 years with the commission, Sarah Ridgely accepted a position as Senior Master Plater at the Architect of the Capitol. Sarah most recently served as a project manager for the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. In her new position, Sarah will lead the development of a master plan for the Capitol complex. We thank Sarah for her significant contributions to NCPC, and we look forward to working with her in her new capacity. This concludes my report. You do have my written report in your packets. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta, and congratulations to Sarah. We'll miss you, but what an exciting next step for you. Wish you all the best. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Acosta? We're hearing no questions. We will move to Agenda Item Number 5, which is the Legislative Update. Ms. Gylar?
Thank you, Ms., Madam Vice Chair. I do have some items to report. The first is House of Representatives Bill 2365. It's entitled "The Gold Star Mother's Family Monument Extinction Act." It passed the House on July 26th of this year, and it extends through January 2nd, 2027, the authority of the Gold Star Mother's National Monument Foundation to establish a commemorative work in honor of the Gold Star families. Following its passage, it was sent to the Senate, and it's been referred to the Committee on Energy and Natural Resources. A second item I'd like to report is House of Representatives Bill 1664. This is entitled "To Authorize the National Medal of Honor Museum Foundation to Establish a Commemorative Work in the District of Columbia and Its Environments and for Other Purposes." The bill authorizes the National Medal of Honor Museum Foundation to establish a commemorative work in accordance with the requirements of the Commemorative Works Act on federal land in the District of Columbia in honor of the extraordinary acts of valor, selfless service, and sacrifice displayed by Medal of Honor recipients. As I indicated, the bill passed the House on the 26th of July, was referred to the Senate on the 27th, and then referred to the Committee on Energy and Natural Resources. This concludes my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item 6 is the Consent Calendar. There are seven consent calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for approval of preliminary and final building plans for the placement of temporary facilities at the Lincoln Memorial submitted by the National Park Service. The second is for approval of comments on concept plans for an intersection improvement project at Pennsylvania and Potomac Avenue Southeast as submitted by the National Park Service. The third is for approval of preliminary and final site development plans for the Extonet Antenna Project at the Department of Agriculture South Building on Independence Avenue submitted by the General Services Administration. The fourth is for approval of preliminary and final site and building plans for renovations and in addition to the Veterans Affairs Medical Center Oncology and Cancer Center in Washington, DC, submitted by the Department of Veterans Affairs. The fifth is for approval of preliminary and final building plans for the Sutland Collection Center Garber Facility Building 38 in Sutland, Maryland, submitted by the Smithsonian Institution. The sixth item is for approval of comments on revised concept plans for the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center Building 308 Modernization and Addition in Beltsville, Maryland, submitted by the Department of Agriculture. Finally, the seventh item is for approval of preliminary site and building plans for the replacement of the P-191 Water Treatment Plant at the Marine Corps Base Quantico in Quantico, Virginia, submitted by the Department of Defense. Are there any questions regarding the seven items on the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Paul McMahon is removed.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon, seconded. Mr. Staudigal, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call? Commissioners, please say yes, no, or abstain.
Motion was made by Commissioner McMahon, and the second was made by Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Abstain.
Thank you, the motion has carried. First item on the open session is Agenda Item 7A, Approval of Final Site and Building Plans for the Mariner S. Echols and Federal Reserve Board East Building Renovation and Expansion. Mr. Webb?
Hello. Are y'all able to see my title slide?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. "Good afternoon, members of the commission. The Board of Governors of the Federal Reserve System has submitted plans for final approval to renovate and expand the Mariner S. Echols Building at 2051 Constitution Avenue Northwest, and to renovate and construct an addition on the Federal Reserve Board East Building at 1951 Constitution Avenue Northwest. The proposed project is needed to address a critical backlog of upgrades, reduce leased space, and accommodate the growing needs of the Board and its visitors. You will recall the commission approved the preliminary plans for the project in October of last year after providing comments on the concept design back in December of 2019. The preliminary review included more detailed plans for the preferred design alternative in addition to a transportation management plan and a commitment by the Board to NCPC's comprehensive planned parking ratio of one parking space for every five employees. The commission's final review focuses on the following: Did the applicant address the comments and recommendations made during the preliminary review? Did the applicant provide requested information? And are there any outstanding issues? As a reminder, both buildings are located on Constitution Avenue Northwest and downtown Washington across from the National Mall. Zooming in more closely, you can see the Echols and the FRB East Buildings, Echols here, FRB East here. Directly to the north is the Martin Building, also owned by the Board, which is currently undergoing rehabilitation. Similar to the other buildings along this stretch of Constitution Avenue, both the Echols and FRB East Buildings have extensive front lawns on the south side of the buildings with historic ceremonial entrances across from the mall. To refresh your memory, since it has been a year, here are a few photographs of the Echols Building. The Board currently has a workforce of approximately 3,400 employees. They are consolidating their workforce into the Martin, Echols, FRB East, and 1709 New York Avenue Buildings, which are all owned by the Federal Reserve. And here are photographs of the FRB East Building. As we shared during the prior reviews, the Board and their design team began meeting with agency stakeholders in the spring of 2019 to discuss the project and begin reviewing design options. We have convened often since the project began, and the Board has held seven Section 106 Consulting Party meetings to date. Therefore, NCPC staff commends the Board for fully engaging partner federal agencies and the Section 106 consulting parties through the evolution of the design process and for a thorough and responsive submission. For this final review, the key elements that have been refined since preliminary include further development of the Echols Building infill, skylights, and atriums, and the FRB East Building rear addition, clarification of tree removal and replacement, changes to 20th Street, and perimeter security. Information on wayfinding and exterior lighting has now been provided for final review. I will focus today's presentation on those elements, beginning with the final design of the infill and additions to the buildings. As we discussed in prior reviews, both the Echols and FRB East Buildings will be modernized, and high-character spaces, features, and materials will be preserved to the greatest extent possible. The exterior of the historic buildings will be restored and upgraded for security. Since the preliminary review, the applicant has refined the design for the infill additions at the Echols Building. Still, five-story infill additions will be constructed on the east and west sides of the building that will connect the existing north and south wings. The east and west exterior courtyards will be converted into atriums, with the east atrium becoming an entrance to Echols for staff and VIPs. The east atrium will also contain vertical circulation down to the existing tunnel between Echols and the Martin Building and a new tunnel between Echols and FRB East Building. During the preliminary review, the commission requested the Board continue to use the Section 106 process to evaluate the scale of the Echols Building skylight and impacts on views from Constitution Avenue. Through that process, the applicant has continued to refine the skylight so as any visual impacts from Constitution Avenue are negligible. The applicant has provided new renderings illustrating the viewshed analysis to demonstrate the lack of visual impacts. Therefore, staff supports the skylight design for the Echols Building as it achieves a balance between minimizing views from Constitution Avenue and preserving the center pavilion's character-defining features within the courtyard. Further design refinement since preliminary is at the entry elevation on 20th Street as the existing site walls will be slightly widened and lowered to signal entry into Echols. The recess at the first floor will create a small forecourt between the infill and site walls and serve as the new threshold into the building. The historic gates will be displayed within the forecourt. The glass infills will maintain the original massing while connecting the existing wings. The infill additions are set back 15 feet from the main facades, which helps the wings to appear as they did historically. The Board is proposing sculpted, vertical bronze metal shading fins to provide solar control and reference the historic palette of decorative bronze of the existing building. Now, let's look at the final addition, final design of the rear addition to the north side of FRB East. As we discussed in the earlier reviews, the applicant will construct an addition on the north side of the existing building that is five levels above grade and four levels below grade. An atrium will be constructed between the existing building and the new addition, and the lower levels of the atrium will house amenity functions for the Board and will include a cafeteria and conference space. The addition would respond to the existing architecture of FRB East and will also be clad in Georgia white marble. The new five-story addition aligns with the fifth floor of Echols. The mechanical penthouse has been minimized and placed to reduce views from Constitution Avenue. On the east and west sides, the fifth floor of the addition will align with the ridgeline of the roofs on the FRB Building's wings. With the exception of the corners, the historic building has a consistent base spacing of plasters and window openings. The addition will have diffused glazing, which is referencing the historic building's plasters, and similar window openings. Two-story-high, 30-foot-tall openings, similar to the historic building, will be located between the plasters to create a civic scale. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission supports the design of both buildings as they successfully respond to the existing architecture and create additions and infills that are contemporary yet compatible to the historic buildings while exhibiting high-quality civic design appropriate for buildings located on Constitution Avenue. Now, let's shift to a discussion of tree removal and replacement. At the preliminary review, the commissioner supported the proposed landscape design for the project and the approach to preserving historic features such as the fountains in the Echols front lawn while introducing new water features to the FRB east lawn. These elements have been carried forward to the final design. As, as requested by the commission at preliminary, the applicant has submitted information regarding the overall tree removal and preservation strategy for the project, including size, type, and location. As the commission first reviewed this project in December of 2019, staff notes that the project is subject to NCPC's prior tree replacement policy and not the current one. There are a total of 168 trees existing on both sites where the buildings are located, of which 32 are to remain and 136 are to be removed and replaced with 104 trees. Of the trees to be removed, 46 are in the right-of-way or on the property line. Of those 46 trees, 34 are documented as street trees in the right-of-way based on the DDOT, the district's Department of Transportation database, with 28 at Echols and six at FRB East. The remainder of the trees in the right-of-way are in the public parking right-of-way. Due to the condition of the street trees and the scope of demolition at or adjacent to existing trees, all street trees are unable to be preserved. 34 street trees are to be removed but replaced with 55 new street trees, 34s at the Echols block and 21 at FRB East. Per NCPC's calculation, the 34 street trees being removed would require 41 replacement trees. Since the proposed plan meets this recommendation, it exceeds it at planting 55 proposed street trees. For the overall site, 104 new trees will be planted. In considering the scale of the new additions and development, the historic character of the building's lawns opening onto Constitution Avenue, and the desire to restore the historic planting intent, staff finds that the Board's tree replanting plan, including size, type, and location, is in accordance with NCPC's tree replacement policy. Since the preliminary review, the applicant has continued to coordinate with DDOT, the district's Public Space Committee, and the agencies regarding proposed changes to 20th Street Northwest and public space improvements. You will recall that 20th Street is the street that runs between Echols and FRB East. 20th Street will be completely removed and replaced between Constitution Avenue and C Street due to the construction of the underground garage and the tunnel. NCPC has jurisdiction over the use under the right-of-way. 20th Street is proposed to be narrowed from the existing 42-feet width to 32-feet-six-inches in width to create a more pedestrian-oriented street that relates to the historic lawn font plan width and centerline. On-street parking will remain on the east side of 20th Street. This adjustment creates additional dimension for street tree plantings on the east side of 20th Street, a planted buffer along the garage exit ramp, and lengthens the exit ramp drive to create a safer condition for pedestrians. A new raised mid-block crossing on 20th Street Northwest will connect the main entrance of the Echols Building with the main entrance of the FRB East Building. Special paving at this mid-block crossing will provide a connection between the two buildings separated by 20th Street. There is also going to be a bump out in the road on the eastern side to narrow the raised crosswalk area to 24 feet in width. Staff commends the applicant for working with the agencies through the design issues and supports the narrowing of 20th Street Northwest to 32-feet-six inches in width with the historic lawn font plan centerline maintained. Now, let's discuss the perimeter security around the buildings. The existing bronze-clad perimeter security system around the Echols Building will, will be replaced by a cable-rail system similar to the one installed at the Department of Commerce. The Echols Building has an International Security Committee rating of Level 5 because it is the official headquarters building. FRB East Building has an International Security Committee rating of Level 4, but currently it does not have any perimeter security. Proposed perimeter security elements will be consistent for both buildings and simplify the alignment, consisting of either a post-and-rail system with an internal cable located in planting areas, or simpler individual bollards and paving at entry locations or where pedestrian circulation is required. All bollards surrounding the buildings will be consistent medium-tone gray powder-coated finish tested and certified to meet minimum performance criteria. In front of the Echols along Constitution Avenue, the existing marble walls will be retained in place and serve as anti-ram knee walls. The appearance of security barriers around the campus will be minimized through screening and softening with planting, incorporation into site amenities, and integration of multiple barrier types. As requested by the commission at preliminary, the applicant has provided information on the new guard boost that will replace the existing ones. The guard boosts are complementary to the design principles that have been established at the new additions, quiet, restrained, transparent, and recognizable as new additions to the historic landscapes. Additionally, the guard boosts are intended to blend in with the landscape to the greatest extent possible. Overall, staff finds the proposed perimeter security system is much improved with its simpler, more minimal design. The post-and-rail allows for fewer bollards with less impact on the tree zone. Therefore, staff supports the proposal to replace the existing perimeter security system around the Echols Building with a simpler, more elegant post-and-rail design in the same locations as the existing bollard system, supports the proposal to replicate the same perimeter security design around the FRB East Building, and finds that overall the proposed design is an improvement from the existing oversized and tightly spaced bollards. Moving on to the lighting, the exterior lighting will be updated and upgraded across the site. Street lighting will meet DDOT and Monumental Core Street standards. To illuminate the site more effectively for aesthetics, safety, and security, exterior lighting will consist of building facade lighting, fountain feature lighting, flag lighting, pathway lighting, and security lighting. Facade lighting will complement and unify the site. Facade fills will be illuminated with in-grade uplights. Cornices will be illuminated with miniature luminaires at the base of the cornice. The facade fountain and flag lights use precision LED optics to limit coverage to the building, the water feature, or flag surfaces, and will be lamped with color-tunable dimmable LEDs, and will be tuned and dimmed based on time of night and activity. Therefore, staff supports the Board's lighting strategy, noting that exterior lighting will be updated across the site. In respect to wayfinding, the Board notes that their goal is to develop a wayfinding strategy that emphasizes the Federal Reserve's civic importance. These elements will complement the campus's exterior by remaining sensitive to the design, materiality, and finishes of each building's facade. The exterior signage uses contemporary materials and processes that respect the historic features of each building while creating a more unified vision and signage system throughout the campus. Anticipated sign types include a building name at the main entries of both Echols and FRB East Buildings, an inlaid board seal at the Echols main entry, and a commemorative cornerstone at the FRB East entry. The Board provided a wayfinding plan and drawing showing the sign types found on the campus, so therefore, staff supports the Board's approach to signage and wayfinding, creating a more unified appearance and signage system throughout the campus. Staff notes that the Board has continued to coordinate all improvements with the National Park Service and met with MPS on May 12, 2021, and reviewed the current plans. MPS felt there were no adverse effects to Reservation 108, which is the triangular park immediately to the north of the FRB East Edition. Thus, in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission approves the final site and building plans for the Federal Reserve Board's Echols and FRB East Building renovation and FRB East Building renovation and expansions as the applicant has responded to the commission's comments and requests from the preliminary review. As I've already covered the rest of the recommendations, I will conclude my presentation. Jeff Foltz with the Federal Reserve Board is here, as well as members of the Fordus Design Team to assist in answering any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Webb? If there are no questions, I will now open it to the commission for discussion. I'll start with Commissioner May and then go in a round-robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner May.
Thank you very much. I don't have much to say about this project other than to compliment Federal Reserve Board for all the work on navigating the complicated process of getting a project this substantial approved through all of the hurdles you have to clear. We appreciate working with you on the aspects of this that have affected Park Service land. And I know we still have one more to go, and it's been an excellent working relationship. So I appreciate all of your efforts, and of course, I appreciate the excellent staff report that summarizes the project. So that's everything I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Oh, sorry. I have no, I have no substantial comments. I'll align myself with Commissioner May's comments. And just also say, you know, and I'm sure I speak for everybody too, when I say how much, I'm sure everyone appreciates, especially the staff, the kind of coordination and cooperation, especially with a project of this scope that there appears to have been, and all, you know, in all these consultations to get to this point. And it's impressive. So I'll conclude with that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I feel the same way. I think it's a lovely project. And I'm really glad GSA was the former owner of what we called the South Interior Building. I'm really happy to see it have a new life. And I also want to say something for the Fed. They've been really put through their paces, and I think had some really sort of hostile criticism at one point that was unjustified. I would like, I would note, I think it's regrettable that the south, what are we calling it now? The East Building. I think at one point, the elevation was better. I would like to have seen more robust masonry than the final design, but I know why they did it. They were pushed in that direction by other reviewers, which I think was unfortunate. But all in all, I think the project is lovely. It's going to be very clearly a unified campus for the organization. And I really think that the Federal Reserve deserves a lot of credit because they have withstood a tumultuous time in our little ecosystem and have responded diligently and with grace.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I associate with all the other comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Cash.
I'd also like to associate with all the other comments. I think that the project looks great. I was really excited to see the road and parking diet that Twentieth Street's going on. The one I'd have with that is maybe when they're finalizing the plans, a bulb out on the south end of Twentieth Street would be nice just to reduce that street crossing even more for all the pedestrians and tourists down there. But I just think that that's great to get rid of some more parking down there on the Mall. And also still a bit bummed about the tree replacement, but I'm glad that the replacement plan looks strong to get some more mature trees out there from the FRB building as soon as they can. So great work.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang.
Hi there. Thank you very much for the information. I have no additional questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood.
I guess I'll associate with other comments. I'll just add, and maybe add to a little bit what Commissioner Cash said. I do appreciate the road section, how that was able to be navigated. I know there were lots of different challenges to that, including the Lawn Font city plan of streets. So I just, you know, I think there are just numerous examples of situations where there were deep challenges. And I think certainly the FRB team, but also the NCPC team and the DC government folks, I think all were able to come together and put together what will be a great project. So thank you all for all of your work on this.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner McMahon.
Not sure Commissioner McMahon is still with us on the call. I will make the same general comments as everyone else. I think this is an incredibly thoughtful approach. I appreciate the receptivity and the collaboration and working through lots of challenges on the project, but I do think it's going to be a great project. And I too want to associate with Commissioner Cash and Commissioner Trueblood's comments about Twentieth Street. A road diet in any city is really impressive. And this one, I think, is done particularly thoughtfully. And I appreciate Commissioner Cash's comment about thinking about the other corner. That's an interesting idea. But again, thank you so much to everyone associated with the project. The effort really shows. So if we want to move on here, is there a motion to approve the final site and building plans?
I'll make the motion to approve the final site and building plans. This is Commissioner Argo.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Mr. Stodigal, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
I have the motion by Commissioner Argo and the second by Commissioner Wright. And then Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon? Is Commissioner McMahon with us, back with us? And then Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chang?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion has carried. So next agenda item is seven B, approval of comments on the draft master plan for the Food and Drug Administration Mirakirk Road Campus. Ms. Free.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear and see me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The U.S. General Services Administration, in coordination with the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, has submitted a draft master plan for the FDA Mirakirk Road Campus, or MRC, located in Laurel, Maryland. The commission heard an information presentation on the master plan earlier this year in February. The purpose of the proposed master plan is to guide future development of the campus over the next twenty years, where FDA plans to consolidate fifteen-hundred additional employees from various leased spaces in the region. Through its expansion, GSA and FDA envision the campus as a leading scientific institution that creates a more efficient and cost-effective agency and a campus that is exemplary of environmental stewardship. And overall, staff comments favorably on the goals and the approach presented in the draft master plan. The FDA MRC is a two-hundred-and-forty-nine-acre campus located approximately sixteen miles northeast of central Washington, DC. The campus is centrally located between Route One to the west and Interstate Two-Ninety-Five to the east. The campus is near several other federal properties in Prince George's County, including the Beltsville Agricultural Research Center, the NASA Goddard Spaceflight Center, and the proposed Bureau of Engraving and Printing Site. The campus is also located about one and a half miles east of the Mark Mirakirk Station and six and a half miles north of the Green Belt Metro Station. Other FDA campuses in the region are also nearby, including the FDA White Oak Campus in Silver Spring and the FDA Center for Food Safety and Applied Nutrition in College Park. The campus has primary access from Mirakirk Road and is bisected by Odell Road, dividing the property into a west parcel and an east parcel. The west parcel measures approximately one-hundred-and-ninety-seven acres and contains office, laboratory, and research facilities. The east parcel is subdivided into three areas occupied by the Maryland Army National Guard, the South Laurel Pumping Station, and a large tract of undeveloped forested land. The master plan focuses development on the west parcel only, around two existing buildings referred to as modules or mods, one and two, and the Beltsville Research Facility, or the BRF. This area is identified in yellow on the slide. And as such, staff notes that the draft master plan includes three potential development alternatives that consider future development on previously disturbed sites and preclude development of the densely forested east parcel. The commission reviewed the most recent master plan for the MRC in nineteen eighty-one. Prior to that, the campus site development plan was reviewed by the commission in nineteen sixty-six. Following the current draft review, GSA and FDA plan to submit the final MRC master plan for the commission's comments in mid-to-late twenty-twenty-two. And today, we are looking at the draft review for the MRC's new master plan. At the draft review stage, the commission should be focused on issues such as land use and transportation as well as impacts to environmental and historic resources. I'll cover these topics throughout the presentation. And note that the presentation and recommendations provided on the master plan are organized by development alternatives, transportation management plan, perimeter security, and additional coordination. The next few slides include photos of the campus. I'll run through these fairly quickly as many of the photos and images were included in the information presentation and virtual tour provided earlier this year. On this slide, we have some views around the main campus entrance on Mirakirk Road and of the modules one and two. This area is located to the northern portion of the west parcel. These photos here illustrate the existing conditions around the Beltsville Research Facility site. And additional views here show some of the aging infrastructure and existing security fencing behind the module-one parking lot. The MRC is a secure campus with a perimeter fence that defines its boundary. The main entrance on Mirakirk Road has controlled access, and a second secure access point is provided on Odell Road for authorized personnel and vehicles only. Internal to the campus, there is another secure access point between the animal research facility site and the modules one and two. With regard to non-vehicular circulation, there is currently limited pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure within and around the site. Internal to the campus, the sidewalks are generally limited to the building perimeters and do not provide connections between the facilities. And the campus is characterized by a number of significant natural features, including its topography. As studied in the nineteen eighty-one master plan, the best area of potential views at the MRC is located near the entrance road before the topography slips down into the site's natural stream valleys. And there are several large streams, wetlands, and bodies of water throughout the campus, including a central location between the mod one and two and BRF site. There are also approximately fifty-eight acres of forest within the study area and the east parcel. The applicant completed a forest stand delineation plan and determined that most of the forests within the study area are categorized as early-mid successional, which is a forest in a transitional stage between young and mature age. In the next segment of the presentation, I'll briefly discuss prior studies that led up to the development of the draft master plan. And then I'll discuss the development program and the three potential alternatives in more detail. In twenty eighteen, a land use infusibility study was completed to understand the capabilities for additional development at the MRC. Despite environmental constraints, it concluded that significant development was possible while maintaining current operations. A series of land development strategies and scenarios were tested as part of the feasibility study, resulting in three fundamental land use strategies that assumed a low, a medium, and a high level of density on the site. At the start of the master planning process in the fall of twenty twenty, a closer look at the site revealed that building on the undeveloped area of the east parcel and the southern portion of the site was not feasible because development on this parcel would have significant adverse environmental impacts, including the loss of tree canopy that could not be replaced onsite pursuant to the comprehensive plan policies. The draft master plan proposes a consistent program across all three alternatives. In summary, the plan includes two phases of development that coincide with two phases of employee consolidation. The first phase is anticipated to be complete by twenty thirty, adding seven hundred employees to the MRC's existing three-hundred-person population. This phase also proposes approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-eight square feet of development and a new parking garage. The second phase will consolidate an additional eight hundred employees to the campus for a total population of eighteen hundred. Another two-hundred-thousand square feet of development is proposed in addition to a second parking garage. And in addition, staff notes that all development, all of the development alternatives considered would comply with the comprehensive plan's tree preservation and replacement policies and also maintain the existing vegetative buffers around its perimeter. In development of the alternatives, the applicant team studied the site's natural and man-made features, including building orientation and axes, solar pathways, opportunities for open space amenities, and walking distances. While the development program remains the same, the three alternatives propose differing arrangements and locations for the proposed buildings, parking garages, and open spaces. Alternative A, compact campus, concentrates new development near mods one and two and locates new parking on the BRF site. Alternative B, dual campus, distributes new office and parking about equally between the two sites. An alternative C, northeast campus, concentrates all new development and all new parking at the BRF site. And staff notes that the Food and Drug Administration is currently conducting two phases of laboratory studies to determine the appropriate size of laboratory space for the campus, which may affect the development footprint, and therefore has yet to identify a preferred alternative. In the next two slides, I'll discuss each of the alternatives in further detail. Beginning with alternative A, two new office buildings connect to module one. An employee parking is located at the BRF. As proposed in all three alternatives, an elevated boardwalk through the natural landscape space would provide a pedestrian connection between the two sites. Visitors would be screened at the main entrance on Mirakirk Road prior to entering the campus's secure perimeter. A new secure entrance and truck screening facility is also proposed on Odell Road across from the Maryland Army National Guard. The proposed buildings vary from one to six levels. This height respects the existing tree line and is only slightly taller than the height of module one. One of the proposed office buildings will be constructed on an existing One of the proposed office buildings will be constructed on an existing surface parking lot behind module 1, and the second will terminate the view from the main entrance. And this is an illustrative view of the main entrance in alternative A from Mirkirk Road. And this alternative, the building's glass atrium, terminates the view from the entrance beyond the screening area. And overall, with regard to alternative A, staff supports the compact configuration of the proposed buildings adjacent to modules 1 and 2, but finds that the location of the employee parking at the BRF site is secluded from the buildings that it serves. An alternative B, a proposed office building is connected to module 1 and extends across the site, connecting to another new office building at the BRF. One parking garage is proposed on the BRF site, and the other is proposed behind module 1. This alternative has the same secure access points on Mirkirk and Odell Roads. The interconnected office buildings are four and five stories high. Similar to alternative A, an office building will terminate the view from the main entrance. And this is an illustrative view of the main entrance in alternative B from Mirkirk Road. It reads very similar to the previous alternative with a glass atrium that terminates the view. However, the office building in this alternative is one story lower than the building proposed in alternative A. And overall, with regard to alternative B, staff supports the orientation of the buildings on the central landscape space. However, the long sequence of interconnected buildings creates somewhat of a hardened edge that conflicts with the site's unique natural character. Staff also finds that the location of the employee parking near the existing and the proposed buildings better supports the facilities in which it serves. Alternative C proposes two separate office buildings at the BRF and a curvilinear form that opens up onto the natural landscape amenity space. Both future parking garages are also located at the BRF. And staff notes that this alternative differs from alternatives A and B, and that it retains 150 employee parking spaces and an existing surface parking lot to serve those working in modules 1 and 2. Also, the truck screening facility is co-located with the main entrance on Mirkirk Road. And here, the proposed office buildings are proposed as five stories each. You can also see the view into the natural landscape space is unobstructed beyond the truck screening facility at the main entrance. And this is an illustrative view of the main entrance in alternative C. It is very different from the other two alternatives in that the proposed development does not terminate the view. Instead, the natural landscape acts as an entrance feature into the campus. And overall, for alternative C, staff finds the concentration of proposed development and structured parking at the BRF site seems isolated from the existing module 1 and module 2 buildings. We also find the main entrance approach from Mirkirk Road is enhanced by the uninterrupted view of the campus's natural landscape. However, the truck screening facility located at the main entrance may distract from the sense of arrival to the campus and may also appear unwelcoming to visitors and the neighboring residential community. And in addition, staff finds that the draft environmental impact statement prepared for the project indicates that the three alternatives have a comparable degree of environmental impacts. Therefore, the selection of a preferred alternative will likely result from development of other issues such as programmatic needs in urban design. Therefore, in addition to the alternative's specific comments, staff recommends the applicant consider additional comments and development of the preferred alternative, including an updated operational mix reflective of the campus's program needs and how to maximize an uninterrupted view of the natural landscape from the main entrance, which may include further study of the view through the glass atrium. The applicant has also developed a draft transportation management plan, or TMP. And the next few slides, I will cover the travel demand management, or TDM, strategies proposed and their effect on parking demand at the MRC over the next 20 years. The TMP indicates that most FDA employees travel approximately 11 to 20 miles to work, and approximately 97% of the employees drove to work alone pre-pandemic. With 320 parking spaces available for the current population of 300 employees, this results in a parking ratio of 1 space for every .94 employees. Staff notes, the results of an employee survey indicate that most employees anticipate returning to the campus once the pandemic subsides to access laboratory and other resources on campus necessary to perform their work. The TMP seeks to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicle, or SOV, trips to meet NCPC's 1-2 parking ratio incrementally by 2040, with an interim goal to achieve a 1-1.35 ratio by 2030. The TMP outlines various TDM strategies to increase the number and quality of options for travel to and from the campus. Staff notes, the proposed TDM strategies are consistent with the policies of the federal transportation element. Examples include enhancing transit services and connections, including a shuttle service between the campus and the Mark Station, and providing flexible non-transit options, such as carpool programs that extend to employees at nearby federal facilities. The TMP includes an interim goal to reduce the existing parking ratio to 1-1.1 prior to the first phase of consolidation. Staff notes, the amount of surface parking will not change until the first phase of employee consolidation in 2030. Staff acknowledges this interim parking ratio is only a slight improvement from the existing conditions over a period of several years. Therefore, staff requests the applicant return to the Commission two years after the campus's pandemic return-to-work plan is implemented, with an update to the TMP identifying an improved interim parking ratio goal for the timeframe prior to the first phase of consolidation. Staff notes that all three alternatives propose a parking garage with phase 1 that would result in a parking ratio of 1-1.35 by 2030, and a second parking garage with phase 2 to meet the 1-2 goal by 2040. However, a 1-1.35 ratio achieved over 10 years is far below the current NCPC parking ratio and the former parking ratio standard for this facility. Therefore, staff does not support the construction of a parking garage 10 years from now that will only result in a 1-1.35 parking ratio. Therefore, staff recommends the Commission defer its approval of the number of parking spaces in both parking garages until such time that each phase is closer to being realized so there can be an assessment of the efforts to implement the TDM strategies in place, more certainty of the future population, and a better understanding of post-pandemic travel patterns. The draft master plan also incorporates guidance for architectural character, streetscape, landscape, and security design, urban design, and wayfinding. The draft master plan indicates that the desired image of the MRC can be achieved by assimilating the look and feel that ties this campus to the other FDA properties in the region. The draft master plan also anticipates the need for antennas on all new buildings and includes examples of strategies to minimize their visual impact. Overall, the master plan is prepared with the intent to pursue at least lead gold certification and evaluate ways to achieve energy and water net neutrality to the extent possible through the design of the new buildings and landscape. The master plan also incorporates green building design elements, such as using low-carbon-emitting materials, green roofs, green walls, and solar panels. The landscape design will incorporate native vegetation, integrate permeable paving, bioswales, rain gardens, and other low-impact stormwater management techniques. Solar panels and electric vehicle charging stations are also considered in parking areas. The proposed elevated boardwalk within the natural area will also be designed to minimize disturbance from construction. And overall, staff commends the plan's commitment to environmental sustainability by minimizing disturbance, incorporating green building design, maximizing tree preservation and replacement, and implementing innovative stormwater management techniques. Staff notes that the perimeter security for the campus is governed by ISC Level 3 requirements, and final setback distances and building construction criteria will be established with a threat assessment once the preferred alternative is selected. Overall, staff supports the plan's approach to integrate security design with the use of natural topography, new landscape elements, outdoor spaces, and stormwater BMPs. If the threat assessment concludes that additional fences, bollards, and anti-ramp barriers aren't necessary, staff requests sections and illustrative views that show the total height of any of these elements in relationship to the main entrance approach, pedestrian spaces, and internal roadways. An NCPC's policy for intergovernmental review includes a 60-day referral period to allow state and local jurisdictions an opportunity to comment on proposed master plans. These comments received were supportive of the executive director's recommendations and are summarized in the EDR. Overall, staff recommends the applicant continue to work with these agencies to address state and local interests. And as I have already covered the executive director's recommendations in my presentation, I will not repeat them here, but they can also be found within the EDR. And this concludes my presentation. I'd like to now introduce Ms. Shelley Jones, Senior Community Planner with GSA, who would like to say a few words. We also have several people in attendance from FDA and the consultant team available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Before Shelley takes the mic, I'd like to say a couple of things to my fellow commissioners. We were scheduled to take a field trip to do a site visit, and it had to be canceled. It was supposed to take place yesterday, I think. Given our robust conversation about the Bureau of Engraving and Printing that's going to be relocated not too far away, I wanted to say I regret that we weren't able to go because this is a very unusual location. And to get to the campus, it's definitely a suburban context, but suddenly and without warning, you can feel like you're in the middle of, you know, the rolling hills and countryside of Maryland. It's very unusual, and I wish that we'd been able to see it. And the only other point I want to make before Shelley walks you through very capably, our project manager for this master plan, I want to make sure that it's noted that as early as the 1966 development plan and the 1981 update, the 1,800 employees to be located at Mirkirk does not represent any growth at all from what was originally planned. So while there are 300 people working out there now, and the plan does call for an additional, by the time we get to the 20-year planning horizon, 1,500 more, it does not represent any growth from what was planned back in the 60s, for what that's worth. When we get into the conversations about parking ratios and the lack of transit, I think I just wanted to set the table, so you keep that in mind as Shelley walks you through this. Shelley?
Thank you, Mina. Appreciate that. And thank you, Stephanie, as well. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Staff. I'm Shelley Jones, the GSA Senior Planner and Project Manager for the project, as Mina has mentioned. On behalf of the team, I'd first like to thank you all for your review and the consideration of the project and the conversation that you're about to have. We particularly want to acknowledge Diane Sullivan, Stephanie Free, and Lee Webb. We've worked with them very early on, as well as other stakeholders on the project, to coordinate and get feedback, and we're very appreciative of that. And as Mina and Stephanie have both articulated, this draft master plan review that you're looking at is not the first. 1966 was a site development plan, which followed by a 1981 master plan, and it was, as Mina shared, for the population was proposed for 1,800 people. The current population is 300, so that 1,800 has not been realized. FDA does believe that this master plan, total population or proposed population of 1,800 over the next 20 years, is still viable. Additionally, in 2016, FDA embarked upon a master planning effort to inform their consolidation efforts for all of their national capital regional employees. The goal was to see and to work towards consolidating staff onto federally owned property. That involved developing the 2017 land use feasibility study for the Federal Research Center at White Oak, which resulted in the 2018 Headquarters Master Plan White Oak facility that you all reviewed in December of 2018, as well as the 2018 MRC land use feasibility study that Stephanie went through in her presentation. This MRC master plan that you're reviewing, when completed, will be a part of that larger and continued effort to help FDA make decisions on how they consolidate onto those federal properties, as well as assist them in obtaining funding for the individual projects. So briefly, I'd like to speak to some of the staff recommendations, not all of them. As Stephanie mentioned, the preferred development alternative has not been chosen or developed. The project team will thoughtfully evaluate the three development alternatives, the draft EIS, the TMP, and consider all of the recommendations and comments that we receive from this Commission, as well as the Prince George's County Commission and other agencies that we've coordinated with, requirements policies, and data from other projects that are going on to help to inform how the preferred alternative is being developed. For the final master plan document, we will articulate and illustrate the rationale behind the location of the buildings and the parking that will be determined in the preferred alternative. As we've done in this draft master plan, we'll provide a table that describes that at a high level. It'll include population, building type, square footage, as well as parking spaces. And each of the development alternatives, you'll see and will notice that the natural landscape amenity at the center of the campus is a consistent theme. This is a theme that we'll continue on with the final master plan. Each development alternative proposes that employees will be able to view the natural landscape amenity from various points within the campus, from various points in the buildings, and directly experience that natural amenity through the elevated walkway and/or view it from the main entrance through the strategically positioned atrium in the building 1, which you'll see in alternatives A and B, or through a wider view, which you saw in alternative C. And for the last comment, well, actually, two more. Staff's request for the project team to come back in two years after the post-pandemic plan has been implemented to review the TMP. That information will be included in the TMP once we move towards the final master plan. So we will come back in two years to take a look at that. And now, lastly, the MRC is located in an exurban community. As Mina has mentioned, it is a unique facility, and hopefully, maybe when we move towards the final, there may be an opportunity for the Commission and for staff to visit it, to experience it. The MRC TMP implementation plan takes an incremental approach towards meeting the parking ratio goal. The thought being is that a considerable increase in population mass together with the increased transit options and frequency is needed to help facilitate reaching the parking ratio faster. Currently, it's uncertain when that population mass, from a community standpoint, will grow, or when those additional options will be possible. or when those additional options will be possible. MRC's location, the community population, the limited transit options and locations, the two-lane road, the MRC operations and work patterns are some of the factors that pose challenges to meeting this quicker. I want to thank you for your time. And as Stephanie has mentioned, joining me are members of the consultant team and FDA representatives to address any questions you may have. And we look forward to your comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jones and Ms. Free. Are there any questions from the commission? Hearing no questions, I really appreciate that very thorough presentation. And I'd like to open it up to the commission for discussion now, starting with Commissioner Wright, to see if you have additional comments for us, and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner Wright?
I don't have anything more to say. I look forward to hearing the comments. Please be kind.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, I know there'll probably be a lot of other comments, but my focus is the solar issues and the possibility for, with all this potential roof space and other areas, whether the solar will really be thought about in terms of generating power for the establishment, the facility, as well as maybe putting it back into the grid. I'm also interested in the parking and the discussion of having charging capacity for vehicles. It's a real interesting bag there because I think that there must be, there's got to be a way to monetize that in some way that's fair. Because I know that, I think there is some help for people to ride metro or have other sources of transportation. And I think there's some help that the government can give and does give. But if not, we don't want to give free electrical parking and charging to electrical. That's, again, a use of electricity that we would have to accommodate. So there's got to be some kind of a formula figured out to accommodate the offering of the charging. And that would encourage more electrical vehicles, but it also is a cost that we would have to absorb when people are not charging at home, but they're charging at the office. And I think that could be an issue that would need to be looked at. We also be concerned that the kind of solar panels that we're now looking at could be upgraded with very little cost, if any, to something that's more aesthetic in that there are films now that can be placed on these that make them look more like their surroundings and have other possibilities. So these may be futuristic and creative, but I think it's worth thinking about this now, I believe. Having said that, I just hope we can, as always, try to use as much solar as we can. And if we're going to plug vehicles into power, somebody's got to pay for that. And I'm hoping it's the solar panels that's taking care of it and not biodegradables, fuels, that doesn't really solve the problem. It just draws it from another undesirable, non-sustainable source. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
I know we probably shouldn't dwell on it too much, but I am bummed about the parking ratio. I definitely agree that we need to reevaluate this in a few years post-pandemic because right now is probably the hardest time to do planning around this kind of stuff. And I'm just concerned that once you build that parking space and that parking garage, it's a lot harder to get rid of it. So I really think that the suggestion is looking into more shuttles, especially in the context of all the other federal facilities here, given that we're only a little over a mile away from a Mark station. I think that that's something that really needs to be examined. And I'll just say with respect to, we're not putting more people here than we thought we were going to in 1966. In 1966, we did have a metro, and we didn't even have the Mark yet. So I think that we should be really trying to improve from what we were thinking about 40 years ago or 50 years ago now. So I just really think of all the other projects going on in this area, really looking at more transit options to get people on the train.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang? I think I'll move on to Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. It's interesting to look at the different alternatives. I guess I will just also weigh in on parking because, you know, it's our favorite thing. And I agree about the idea of reevaluating. In particular, I was a little bit struck by the low percentage yield of telework and flex scheduling. I saw it was 2% in the short run and 2% in the long run. I really think that is something that, you know, we will really want to look at, even in the short run, even in the coming months and years. As I saw the survey, but it wasn't clear to me how that translates or doesn't translate into reduced need for single occupancy vehicle trips. So I think that could be a great opportunity. In addition to, I think, the other strategies mentioned in the TDM, trying to yield more alternative ways of getting to work, I think, will be important and hopefully reducing the need for those parking garages in a few years' time. Thank you.
Andrew, I think, this is Mina. I think one of the issues there is pretty straightforward. Right now, it's lab workers, and they can't telework. So it'll, I mean, we're not getting much help from public transit here. There's one bus, I think, Shelley, keep me honest here. But the bulk of employees right now are lab workers, so they can't telework, obviously. And so the components that are consolidated on this campus will really be influential on the parking ratios. If there are, I mean, it stands to reason, right? If they're office workers, then they'll have telework options and the like. So that gives me some hope in terms of improving the ratios. Shelley or Rod, if you want to add to that, I think it's kind of an important issue.
You're absolutely right. The majority of the staff that's there now are lab employees. And through the pandemic, they've been working and come in on a daily basis. And that's kind of the population mass that we were talking about. The more of an office-type environment we can get on the campus, we can pull some of that into different ways and into teleworking. So we really have kind of looked at all of the variations and how do we get to that parking ratio earlier. Really, the location, the limited transit option is a concern. I would like to say that some of the things that have been mentioned, if you look into the TNP's measures, there is plans to use shuttles from MRC to the Mark station. Right now, and if you'll remember, FDA has an extremely robust transit program for their White Oak campus, which is also, it's in a suburban location, not as exurban as this one. But they have a strong program. And so if you look back into the TNP, it talks about shuttles from the metro stations, shuttles from Mark, shuttles from the different facilities as well. One of the things that will be looked at in coordinating with some of the other federal agencies that are around our site, as well as there is a technical college there, the possibility of collaborating to use shuttles. But again, that's one piece of it. A strong piece that needs to happen is more transit options and more frequency of transit options. And that really requires looking at the community population and those types of things. And if you don't mind, I also want to address something Commissioner Dixon mentioned. He mentioned the solar panels. For each of the alternatives, we have proposed solar panels and green roofs on top of the garages. There are charging stations. We really tried to look at this because of the pastoral and the natural atmosphere that we really wanted to, because it's the right thing to do and because of the community, look at ways we can be environmentally sensitive. So there are the solar panels, the solar panel coverings over the surface parking lots, wherever they may be, which will be limited. The solar panels on the parking garages that are being offered, and again, the coverings. And I hope that answers some of the questions.
Yeah, I'd like to explore that more later, but I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Trueblood, did that answer or address the concerns you raised?
Yeah, although it does beg a question, which maybe was in the report, although I don't know. I mean, to me, a building that is a research space is very different than a building that is office space. So in these alternatives, are you specifying whether it's office or lab?
So for the draft master plan, we look more at offices. And not to get into a whole lot of detail, but FDA is doing a lab assessment now. And as you know, they've been very instrumental in the pandemic, as well as some other activities that have been going on. And so there could be a need for additional labs. And so each one of the development alternatives, we've tried to be flexible so the possibility of including labs for the final can be done. As we start to, and I will say that FDA does not know at this moment who will be moving on to the campus. We don't know for sure if it's going to remain an office function that's moving in or if it's going to be a lab or if it's going to be a mix of office and lab. That is something that we, once we get the results from the lab assessment, that will feed into this final master plan, and that will help us to kind of look at how we move forward with the final master plan. And then even then, because FDA's mission flexes based on what's going on in the environment and in life, even those things have to be at the level of flexibility because they're ever-changing.
Sure. So I guess I'll just sum up. It sounds like this, hopefully, you see this, kind of what we're looking at today in terms of medium and long-term parking as the worst-case scenario. And that, given how we understand the pandemic and given the ultimate program, we'll be able to be much more, hopefully, closer to NCPC's parking goals as you refine the program and the actual construction.
That is the goal. In the master plan, we are trying to reach that one to two. We don't know if it's possible based on all of these factors, if it can be reached immediately because there really are some things that FDA alone is not in a position to change. But it's a metric management of everything else and trying to work as best as we can to get there as soon as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all very helpful. Commissioner McMahon?
Thanks. Interesting proposal. And I kind of shared some of the comments from the other commissioners I heard today. I think it's interesting to know what the plan was in 1966 and 1981. I'm not sure that's very informative for what we want to look at for 2024, 2040. But what I did see looking at is a major expansion of the working population on this particular compound from 300 to 1,500 to 2,000. So I think that's going to reflect, I think, a lot in the TNP and what it does to traffic in this area. It's interesting, since I skimmed through and maybe I missed the TNP slide I looked at, gave no mention of the Greenbelt Metro Station. And I think some of the other projects we've reviewed up in that area, Engraving and Printing, certainly, a couple others, talk about that connection and using mass transit connections from that metro station, not just from the nearby Mark station, to provide alternatives that will help achieve the TNP goals. Certainly, I think at the end of the day, what we analyze, the mix, which we now know is going to be significantly different from today of office workers versus lab workers have the effects of the TNP and transportation. So when they come back, I would expect some more discussion or find that they're really just looking at a concept plan, not a specific metal plan if we don't know who's going on to the reservation days in the comments I was hearing. So much work to be done. Looking forward to see what they come back with, really specifically addressing those issues that revolve around transportation and parking. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Hi. Thank you. I don't have too much to add on the parking and traffic component of this. I think a lot of that has been said. I understand that, you know, we are pretty early in the process. And I expect that, given GSA's aspirations, that we, I'm optimistic that we'll wind up with a reasonable approach to meeting the NCPC parking standards for a facility in this sort of a location. I also agree that, you know, the staff's recommendation to sort of take it slow and determine exactly how much parking is needed based on how the build-out goes and what the actual usage is. That's always a question in my mind, is, you know, what's the current usage of parking? And it seems that, you know, even now, the ratio is not good, right? You have more than a parking space per person for each one who works there, which is a very unusual circumstance. So, yeah, I think moving slowly on the development of parking is, you know, is wise guidance as this moves forward. When it comes to the development of the alternatives, I will suggest that the, that to some extent, the development concepts have sort of a suburban office park feel to them. Not completely. I mean, there are, you know, large buildings and large connected buildings and so on. But it's still relatively low-rise. And I would, you know, I appreciate the setting. It's not the place for, you know, putting a 15-story building. But, you know, maybe a six- or seven-story building instead of a five-story building. I don't know, you know, given that it's labs, I know there are complications with that, with ceiling heights and penthouses on top and all those things. But I would encourage as compact a footprint as possible with good proximity to the parking facility so that you don't have to have, like, internal shuttles so that people can get to their parking space or things like that. I'm optimistic as it develops, it'll come up with good planning. But again, I would just urge a compact approach. So, yeah, that's what I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
Hello. I don't get it. Once again, it appears as though transportation and parking issues are really, we haven't heard too much about anything else. It's kind of the bugaboo on this project. And I think, you know, the, I think the, we have to, I'm trying to figure out exactly how to express what I'm thinking, that we just, before we see this again, we need to have, we need to have, well, sharper and more precise assessments of what we're looking at in terms of the employees and the actual population on the campus and how we're going to manage that. Because that's really, I think, you know, I mean, you can tell by the discussion, we haven't, you know, talked about anything else in terms of the design of the facility or all of that. It's been all about, it's been all about use of private vehicles and how we accommodate that. So that needs, that's what needs the work, you know, in my opinion, before we move ahead with this project. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Very thoughtful discussion and ongoing theme, as you said. Commissioner Argo, parking and use of private vehicles and access to transit, it's a challenging sight. So I appreciate the thought going behind this. At this time, is there a motion to approve the comments on the draft master plan? I will go with Commissioner May. He had his camera on. Is there a second? Is there a second? Well, I'll second it then. This is Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Wright for seconding the motion. Mr. Stodigal, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
I have Commissioner May with the motion and Commissioner Wright with the second. Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon? Commissioner May? Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Chang, it appears that she may have left the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion has carried. Our next item is Agenda Item 7C, Approval of Comments on the Fort Belvoir North Area Draft Development Plan, and Ms. Free joins us again.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Free.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Well, good afternoon again, Commissioners. The Department of the Army has submitted a draft master plan, also referred to as an area development plan, or ADP, for the Fort Belvoir North Area. We also refer to this as the FBNA, located in Springfield, Virginia, where the Commission's comments. Overall, staff notes the purpose of the ADP is to establish a development framework for functions of the Fort Belvoir North Area, and includes specific projects already funded and capacity analysis for potential future development. The FBNA is an 804-acre parcel located approximately two miles north of the main Fort Belvoir installation and just outside of the Capitol Beltway and Fairfax County. The FBNA is a non-contiguous parcel outside of the main installation that is generally segregated to the west of I-95 and north of the Fairfax County Parkway. A closer look at the FBNA shows the site adjacent to residential uses to the north and to the west, and generally private industrial uses and commercial uses to the south and to the east. Acotin Creek, as shown in blue on the slide, bisects the property, with the western half consisting primarily of the creek's tributaries and wooded areas, and the eastern half consisting of previously disturbed and developed land, including the NGA, or National Geospatial Intelligence Agency Headquarters, which was reviewed by the Commission in 2008 and then constructed in 2011. The Commission reviewed the Fort Belvoir Installation Master Plan, also referred to as the Real Property Management Plan, in 2017. The plan calls for more detailed ADPs to be prepared for subsets of the installation, including the FBNA. Prior to 2017, the Commission reviewed site and building plans and a transportation management plan for the NGA headquarters in 2008 and subsequent projects associated with the NGA between 2009 and 2016. Following the current draft review, the applicant plans to finalize the FBNA ADP later this year or early in 2022 for the Commission's review. Just like the previous presentation, today we are looking at a draft review for the FBNA's new master plan. At the draft review stage, the Commission should be focused on issues such as land use and transportation, as well as impacts to environmental and historic resources. I'll cover these topics throughout the presentation. I'll begin by summarizing the existing conditions and site features, then discuss the proposed development within the campus core, including the Future Defense Intelligence Agency, or DIA, headquarters, the capacity plans, transportation management, and other related issues. In addition to the NGA headquarters, existing development at the FBNA includes other support facilities, including a child development center, a fire station, and a remote inspection The site also consists of many natural features, including the Acotin Creek and its tributaries, and areas identified by Fort Belvoir as special natural areas, outlined here in purple. These are areas that have natural resources that warrant special conservation. And a number of man-made constraints also exist on the site. These consist of groundwater contamination and plumes, installation restoration program sites, and military munitions response program sites associated with former ranges. In addition, several easements exist at the FBNA for the Fairfax County Parkway, Interstate 95, an electrical substation, and sanitary sewers that run along the Acotin Creek. As part of the master planning process, the Army conducted a building and road conditions analysis to determine the condition of these existing man-made features, and found that most of the development on the FBNA is relatively new, and the oldest facility is under 15 years of age. In the following segment, I will discuss the existing and proposed development within the campus core. The FBNA campus core is located to the east of Acotin Creek and consists primarily of previously disturbed land associated with the construction of the NGA headquarters, and approximately 24 acres of tree canopy. The draft ADP envisions this zone as an intelligence community campus, consisting of the NGA headquarters, the future DIA headquarters, a Defense Logistics Operations Center, or DLOC, facility, and future capacity development and parking, all within one secure perimeter. The DIA headquarters annex is the only currently funded project in the ADP, as shown with the orange shapes on the slide. The DIA headquarters would include an annex building, a visitor center, a parking garage, and a utility plant. The draft ADP indicates 650 to 1,000 DIA employees would relocate to the FBNA. The number of parking spaces in the garage has not yet been determined, and I will discuss the ADP's parking ratio in more detail in a subsequent portion of this presentation. Through development of a draft environmental assessment, or EA, the applicant studied alternative locations for this facility and determined that the site adjacent to the NGA headquarters best meets-
Okay, and then unplug that, right? No, just unplug. So I'm ready to get to see, just plug this into the back.
Seems that I'm getting some background noise here. To start that thought over again here, the NGA headquarters, the site next to it, best meets the security and standoff requirements while contributing to a walkable intelligence community campus. The site was previously disturbed during construction of the NGA and would allow both facilities to share one secure perimeter. For these reasons, staff supports locating the DIA headquarters on previously disturbed land adjacent to the existing NGA headquarters to foster a compact, walkable campus core. While the proposed site of the DIA headquarters was previously disturbed, this land was also identified as an area to mitigate tree loss associated with construction of the NGA. Staff notes the NGA has only planted a portion of the replacement trees required for construction of its headquarters. Therefore, staff requests a tree preservation and replacement plan with the next submission that addresses the tree mitigation needed for both the NGA and the DIA headquarters. A visual preference survey of FBNA's stakeholders helped to define the character for the DIA headquarters' architecture. The images here are representative of the stakeholders' image ratings. The survey indicated strong appeal for buildings with a rating of three or more. Overall, stakeholders want an aesthetic similar to the NGA, which is the image on the slide here identified with the number three. Some conceptual renderings indicate the DIA headquarters building will include tall windows and geometric designs, and additional views demonstrate this character around additional sides of the building. The ADP also indicates that new buildings within the FBNA would meet the Army's standards for green building design, which includes lead-rated facilities. In addition, staff requests a summary of the FBNA's approach to onsite renewable energy, such as the use of solar panels or geothermal facilities, with the next submission. Capacity development is also proposed within the campus core. The capacity development is intended to provide an understanding of what potential infrastructure may fit on the installation without ascertaining certain tenant needs or program needs at this time. Within the core, capacity development takes advantage of land near existing and funded buildings and utilizes existing infrastructure to support the potential future development. That's shown with the purple buildings on this slide. Six new buildings and five new parking structures ranging from two to six stories are proposed. The parking structures are proposed along the eastern edge of the campus as a visual impediment into the campus and to promote security. The capacity buildings are sited to the interior of the campus to promote walkability between the different facilities. One capacity parking structure is also proposed in the western portion of the existing NGA overflow parking lot. And the draft ADP also proposes midterm projects, which are those labeled as B and D on this slide. These are projects that are in the process of seeking funding. The only midterm project within the campus core is the planned DLOC facility located immediately to the south of the DIA headquarters. And in the next segment of the presentation, I will review the ADP's development suitability analysis and provide an overview of the development alternatives considered. I will note the applicant studied three different development alternatives for the draft ADP that consider minimal, moderate, and maximum expansion scenarios, and identified the maximum expansion alternative as the preferred alternative. The preferred alternative proposes capacity development both within the campus core, as just discussed, and in largely undisturbed areas outside of the campus core. We will discuss the areas where the capacity development is proposed, what kind of development is being proposed, and the infrastructure needed to support this capacity planning. The draft ADP includes four development suitability zones labeled A through D for consideration for the future development. The zones identify the potential for development in areas that are previously developed, identified in green as very high suitability, consist of underutilized roadways identified in dark yellow as high suitability, or are primarily covered with tree canopy identified in yellow and light yellow, also identified as high suitability. The majority of tree canopy on the site is located outside of the campus core in Zones C and D, to the west of Acotin Creek, measuring collectively about 75 acres. Tree preservation is a priority of the federal environment element and is an essential tool in combating the global climate crisis. An NCPC policy strongly prioritizes preservation of trees as a driver for development decisions such as siting and density. As such, staff recommends the Commission does not support designated forested areas as highly suitable for development. The minimal expansion alternative includes the funded DIA headquarters and the planned midterm development while maximizing preservation of the natural environment. I will note the planned midterm projects outside of the campus core include a fire station expansion and an undisclosed tenant facility. In general, these facilities are located on previously disturbed land. However, staff requests the ADP identify any potential environmental impacts, such as tree removal, and the anticipated mitigation strategies associated with the midterm facilities in the next submission. The moderate expansion alternative includes the DIA headquarters and the planned midterm facilities discussed previously, with some capacity development proposed to the west of Acotin Creek and to the south of the DIA headquarters. And the Army's preferred alternative for the FBNA proposes to maximize development of the property in all four zones, as shown with the purple capacity buildings and parking areas on this slide. Capacity planning is proposed within the campus core, as discussed earlier, and expanded to the west of Acotin Creek in Zones C and D as a second secure campus. The preferred alternative also proposes the extension of Heller Road across the creek to provide a second connection between the two sides of the campus. Currently, there is only one connection across Acotin Creek at Barta Road. And here we have a closer look at the capacity planning proposed to the west of Acotin Creek. A collection of 30 one-to-three-story buildings, four surface or structured parking areas, and paved organizational vehicle areas are configured along two internal streets. To the south of the creek tributaries, a cluster of five capacity buildings is proposed around a central parking area. As such, staff finds the overall effect of the capacity development in the preferred alternative is low-density suburban office park with one-to-three-story buildings and surface parking lots or structures primarily located in densely forested areas. As a reminder, the program intended needs for the proposed capacity development are currently unknown. Therefore, the driver for the low-density sprawling nature of the capacity development is not yet understood beyond testing how much development can physically fit on the site. In addition, the capacity plans as proposed would require extending utilities and other infrastructure, like Heller Road, to the west of the site to serve the new development. An EA has not been prepared for the FBNA ADP. The Army intends instead to complete the NEPR process for each individual facility as funding becomes available. Therefore, the entirety of the impacts of the preferred alternative have not yet been analyzed. In addition, a tree preservation and replacement plan has not been provided. For these reasons, staff recommends the Commission does not support the capacity development and parking as proposed. Staff notes the Army and other defense agencies are currently analyzing how to consolidate lease space and, like, missions onto federal installations and campuses, and staff recommends the Commission supports the DoD's early capacity planning work to inform the location and layout of future consolidation and/or other funded projects. However, the capacity plans in the preferred alternative should apply smart growth principles to more efficiently utilize land and seek to avoid or minimize impacts of valuable environmental resources. Therefore, staff recommends the Commission also requests an information presentation from the DoD on a broader understanding of the decision-making processes for siting new and existing missions or agencies on military sites or installations. Overall, as the ADP advances, staff requests the applicant incorporate the following principles into the final master plan to guide the location and design of future development. Minimize disturbance to undeveloped areas and incorporate higher-density development. Minimize forest clearing with the amount of clearing informed for the area available for tree replacement plantings. Study the availability to raise building heights to the existing tree line to increase density while continuing to screen the buildings from surrounding uses. Minimize surface parking and promote structured parking to reduce the parking footprint. And to minimize the use of stormwater retention ponds and instead utilize low-impact development techniques for stormwater management. The draft ADP also includes a transportation management chapter that summarizes the surrounding transportation network and the relevant aspects of guiding transportation documents that are applicable to the FBNA. However, the draft ADP does not currently include a transportation management plan, or TNP, for future development. In summary, the FBNA is primarily served by I-95, the Fairfax County Parkway, Rolling Road, and Backlick Road, which runs just about parallel to I-95. Direct access from the FBNA to the I-95 southbound H of the Express Lands is provided from Heller Road, right about here on the slide. The FBNA is also approximately two miles south of the Franconia Springfield Metro Station, which provides access to the Metro Rail system and the VRE. The VRE connects north to Union Station in Washington, DC, south to Manassas and Fredericksburg, and also destinations west via the Burke Road Station. The FBNA has an extensive internal network of trails that connects to the Fairfax County Trail System. This diagram shows a two-and-a-half-mile route connecting the FBNA with the Franconia Springfield Station. This trail supports safe pedestrian use and bicycle operation between the two locations. Guiding transportation documents applicable to the FBNA include the Federal Transportation Element of the Comprehensive Plan, the Fort Belvoir Real Property Master Plan, TNP, and the NGA, TNP. the Fort Belvoir Real Property Master Plan, TNP, and the NGA TNP. At the time of the NGA headquarters approval, NCPC's parking ratio was one space for every one-and-a-half employees, so one to 1.5. NGA committed to this parking ratio with the intent to meet a one-to-two ratio if additional transportation infrastructure becomes available. In coordination with the applicant, NGA indicated that they currently do meet the one-to-1.5 ratio, but a number of site-specific challenges make it difficult to further improve that ratio at this time. As such, staff notes that a one-to-1.5 parking ratio at the NGA headquarters has been achieved with diligent implementation and monitoring of the NGA TNP. The NGA's site-specific challenges are representative of the challenges that will likely be encountered by the future facilities at the FBNA. One significant challenge is the connection between the FBNA and the Franconia Springfield Metro and VRE Station. Fairfax County operates a connector bus system that currently provides service between the station and the campus. However, ridership is low because the bus service is not synchronized with the train schedule. The applicant has indicated the FBNA no longer operates its own shuttle because DoD agencies can only operate a shuttle service to a transportation hub if there is no public transportation connection currently available. NGA has also explored telework options, which are limited due to the secure nature of NGA's work. The future facilities within the Intelligence Community campus will have similar security constraints. Therefore, staff notes the site-specific constraints are a challenge for reducing SOV trips at the FBNA. Specifically, telework is not feasible due to the limitations of required compartmentalization of classified material that requires work to be performed onsite. Another site-specific challenge is the FBNA's capacity to host surge events, including conferences, mission demand, and industry partner visits, which frequently stress the supply of available visitor parking. As proposed, the future DIA headquarters will be constructed on the only space available to support surge parking during these events. To better understand the visitor parking demand, staff requests a summary with the frequency of large events and conferences and the average number of visitors for each event. And overall, staff requests the applicant develop a TNP for the entirety of the FBNA campus based upon the existing NGA headquarters' TNP and TDM strategies for review with the next submission. Given the challenges previously noted, staff recommends that the FBNA meet a parking ratio of at least one-to-1.5 in the near term, and that TNP outlines strategies with incremental milestones to reach a one-to-two parking ratio over time, which may be achieved with direct access from the installation to the I-95 northbound HOV express lanes or other TDM strategies. In addition, in order to gain an understanding of the Army's approach for allocating parking and meeting these milestones, staff recommends the next submission includes a plan and table that clearly indicates the existing and future employee population, the location, quantity, and type of parking spaces allocated for each facility, and the same information for the parking spaces that are shared amongst the FBNA. Just like the previous project review, the draft ADP was referred to various state and local agencies for the review and comment. The agency comments are summarized in the EDR and are largely consistent with the executive director's recommendations. On the whole, staff recommends the applicant continue coordination with these agencies to ensure the plan addresses the state and local interests. And as I have already discussed the executive director's recommendations throughout my presentation, I will not repeat them here, but they are also summarized within the EDR. And that concludes my presentation. Myself and several others from the applicant team are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Re. And I understand Commissioner McMahon would like to make some comments at this time. So Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, thanks. I had a couple meetings with staff and with the applicant, who I'm sure will have more comments as we get into this thing, on what we're trying to achieve here and some of the good concerns that I think all the commissioners have to address to move forward. The most interesting one is, as I listen to some of the conversation and the recommendations from staff about what they're asking for is as we're developing what is really a conceptual plan with a capacity of a
Commissioner McMahon, could I interrupt you for a second? I just want to check and make sure people can hear you. I'm having a hard time. You're kind of coming out in and out for me. Can
I'm having a hard time as well.
It's difficult. Yep. We'll try again. If it doesn't work, we'll take ten seconds. I'll dial in and we'll do it on the phone, I think. So let me know if I see if this way, if you give me a thumbs up, if this is good, we'll continue. If not, I can dial in.
It's still a little sketchy for me. And we really want to hear what you have to say on this project, so.
Does it make sense to just turn off the camera?
Yeah, why don't you try that and see if that helps?
Does that help in the bandwidth?
Oh, it's much better.
Okay. And I'm a DoD connection, go figure. So thanks for that. So I think what they're doing for exactly what we in DoD ask installations to do and what we see from there is as they look at future development in conjunction with a specific authorized project of what they can do as a base to support future mission. Much of what you see there is not tied to a specific mission, a specific organization at this time, but gives a picture and a master planning perspective of what could be done there. And that's why I see these three options. So I think we'll consider that as a go with the conversation. We have some specific internal review comments to do on whether what they're laying out there fully meets DoD USC criteria will be taken out of board as we address the comments that we as a commission will deliver back to Fort Belvoir. That will affect other things, including the TNP. It's beyond aspirational goals and specific target for parking ratios. And things are doing us, it's hard, I think, for any of the ADP options to talk about a very detailed TNP since we don't know yet who's going in and what their work requirements are going to be and all the rest. But certainly massing and density, protection of current trees and tree growth are important as we move forward. I'm discussing with the appropriate managers in DoD our request to come and talk about general basing plans. Certainly, if we can do that, we will, but I'm not sure it's how appropriate will be today's conversation. But certainly, if it provides additional insight for the board's use, we can do that. And I think the applicant may even have some comments there. So looking forward to comments, work to be done, but it's things that need to be happened. I think it ties into two or three issues, probably speaking right now. One is the continuing drive to continue as we, A, analyze the impacts of teleworking, what that means for the new built environment for office space, combined with the need to reduce our lease-based footprint, which we continue to do, provide from an anti-terrorism force protection standpoint safer facilities for DoD employees to work in and to provide appropriate workspace for, as we talked about before, people who are working in a classified environment that doesn't lend their work to telework arrangements or at-home work arrangements. So I'm certain Fort Belvoir appreciates the opportunity, and we're all well standing by to listen to the comments that the other commissioners may have. Thanks.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions about the presentation? Before we get into discussion, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes, I just have a, I have a, it's maybe a very basic question. So in terms of the tree removal and replacement policy, I mean, oftentimes we think about it in terms of kind of minimal disturbance of, you know, even just a site here, a site there. What we saw with the preferred alternative is maybe the opposite of a minimal disturbance. And so how does the tree removal policy relate to like areas where you're like clear-cutting trees?
Sure, I can start us off there. Our policies at a master plan level are really looking to understand how much is necessary in terms of clearing for what is anticipated in terms of development. So very diagrammatically, at a master plan level, we're looking at what are the areas of trees that need to be removed? And then where are the potential areas that you can replace those trees, whether it be onsite or offsite? So understanding that there may be circumstances like this where a vast amount of clearing is proposed. We use that diagram to help inform us how much can be replaced, but also then in terms of guiding applicants to make smart choices about density and footprint and location of development if it looks like those trees can't be replaced on or offsite appropriately.
Commissioner Cash, questions?
So yeah, for questions at this point. So on the DIA parking garage, I'm looking at the funded versus unfunded. So the DIA parking garage, is that just supposed to be capacity to support the DIA headquarters that's already funded? Or is that also going to support the future D-LOCK facility that is on the map as well?
It is my understanding that it is meant solely for the DIA headquarters, but we do have some folks here from Fort Belvoir and the DIA that could correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi, this is Brad Britton. I'm the Director of Public Works for Fort Belvoir. And based off of the designs that I have seen, it is only capacity for the DIA headquarters at this time.
Okay, and do you have a sense of the proposed height of the parking garage as it's mapped out here? Is this two stories, five stories?
Apologies, I'm going to turn my camera back off because everything lagged real bad just then. The, the structure right now, Mike Marino from DIA might be on. He actually have better details on that.
Yeah, I am. This is Mike Marino from DIA. I'm the master planner for DIA. And first, let me say thank you for this opportunity and the comments that we're getting. That'll be helpful for us as we move forward in addressing your comments. The current height of the parking garage is limited to, I believe, four stories. But again, that is dependent upon how the parking ratio that we end up with after doing the planning in this process allows us to house. So if we're at, if we're at a one, I guess it's a one-point-six-seven or six-point, I'm not sure what the, how to phrase it correctly, one-point-one-to-1.5 ratio, that will then dictate the number of parking spaces that we have to accommodate and then would dictate the height or the number of floors in the parking garage. So conceptually, we're looking at around four stories based on our 650, if we had to maximize our 650 personnel parking, park the 650 personnel.
Okay, and to be clear, that was just for the DIA parking garage. It says it's already funded, so it's still been calculation about how tall it might be.
Correct. And the D-LOCK, which is actually the Defense Intelligence AG Logistics Operations Facility or Center, it is a, that's sort of a conceptual spot for it right now. We're going through various design charrettes and exercises to determining exactly the shape and the exact location. But the intent, as Stephanie pointed out, is to maintain it within the existing disturbed area so that we minimize the impact on other areas within the central core.
Great, thanks. Awesome comments when we get to the round robin, but thanks for answering those questions.
Okey-dokey.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? I have a question. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, and I know you spoke to it just a little bit now, but are there any changes in your process that could lead to a denser development? Whether it's co-location of agencies or assuming a higher density? Obviously, people are very sensitive about the forested area. So I'm curious if there are any changes in your process that you could look at that.
Well, this is Mike Marino again from DIA. We are actually proposing a fairly dense development in the core. The other areas are, and knowing that, hearing the guidance that we're getting from the commission, we'll be looking at that as we look at the D-LOCK facility. But in terms of some of the other developments, what they're calling capacity development, that is all completely notional, as I understand at this point. So it really will be up to whichever entity comes into, you know, the FBNA property to determine, I mean, the, how they want to approach the design process. Given the input that we're hearing from you, the Department of Public Works, Brad Britton's folks, may want to, you know, look at how that layout is currently done and if they wanted us to show it differently or have their parsons, the consultants, show it differently. Instead of being so specific, maybe it's a, just a sort of an area, and then the follow-on entity comes in and works with NCPC and DPW to do something that's a little more dense and a little more acceptable to the staff. Over.
This is Brad Britton with Fort Belvoir, and I concur with that. And also, as a part of that ADP, the quote-unquote preferred portion that's on that ADP is actually considered to be the worst-case scenario for the sprawl. It is really meant to demonstrate that this is, it would never go beyond what you see on that ADP design. That would truly be as wide, as broad as it would ever be. In terms of the way that any of these future requests would come in too, they would likely impact dramatically the way that that layout currently is to the point that it would unlikely to be, to come out to that exact design because it depends on the size of the facilities and the requirements of each one of those facilities as to how close other facilities would be able to be constructed, et cetera. And so we, this is truly the worst-case scenario and purely for the higher army to assist them in their plan-making whenever they consider what they could potentially put on their installations.
So you're speaking to my biggest question, because I guess essentially I'm wondering why the first worst-case scenario is presented as the preferred alternative? So you can appreciate the questions that we're asking. And my other question was going to be about how do you work with these agencies that are going to relocate and what priorities are you taking into account when you want to cite new facilities? So I appreciate that you're already thinking through some of the concerns and questions around that. And I'm going to turn to the commission for further discussion. I may have another question or two for you as we, as we go through. But at this point, I'd like to turn back to Commissioner McMahon. If you want to make any further comments, and then we'll go in a round robin format and use our normal seating order. So I'd ask for everyone to keep their webcams on during the discussion. So Commissioner McMahon, do you have?
And I'll comment without my camera on to help with the bandwidth. All these comments, and Mr. Britton has given some great comments. We talk about this as a developmental plan as being a worst case, and probably that's the appropriate term, but it's, what's the potential build-out, and that's what master plans talk about, that could support future departmental requirements, and that's what he's trying to craft. Part of that, as they go back, I'm sure we'll be taking a look at the comments from the commission and staff in terms of rules regarding massing and parking and parking structures and the like. And there's some discussion and reports about that, about just that same conversation we just had about FDA concerning the height of buildings to match the tree canopy and the rest and provide less of a build-out that is more suburban, which we don't want to do, which occurred as that sprawl. So I think that's what we'll come back with. Again, what they're not necessarily saying is, you know, we're going to bring in 50,000 more people onto Fort Belvoir because we don't know what the requirements are. Our missions change. We see it happening day to day. But here's what Fort Belvoir can accommodate and that will support the Army in their conversation, both for the Army and for other DoD tenants who have a mission in the national capital region and need to be behind the fence line. So I think with that, I will stop and listen to the comments from my other commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner May?
Oh, where to begin? So first of all, I appreciate Commissioner McMahon's comments about where it goes from here and the direction to make progress on it. I will say that there is an awful lot of progress to be made. I, I, I've tried to think of like, when have we seen something like this at NCPC? Which is as problematically planned, I mean, I'm trying to be polite about it, as this. I mean, I understand the idea, right? The idea of getting out of lease space, providing The idea of getting out of these space, providing, you know, good space, secure space for the conduct of important government operations. But the notion that this is the, this is the preferred alternative for all of this additional development would involve clear-cutting so much trees to put up a bunch of pancake buildings and surface parking lots? I, I, I don't know what to say. I don't know who you hired to do this master planning, but I think they need to go back to school. This is just, I, I, it's, it's inexplicable that something like this would be seriously advanced. I think that there needs to be a complete rethinking of how land is considered. This, I mean, just looking at the plan, you know, the maps that say you've got this area that's suit, you know, highly suitable for development, and this, what was, what was the term? Was very highly suited and highly suited? I mean, it's like the scale goes from excellent to most excellent. No, it's filled with trees. It's not ever excellent, it's not highly suitable. It, it, it could be done if there is no other alternative. But there's something wrong with the mindset. You start out with clear-cutting a forest being suitable, or being highly suitable. I, I, I just feel like there's, there's some, some really basic rethinking that needs to be done. You know, there are other aspects of the report that are concerning to me. You know, the, the notion that the aspiration for parking is, is to meet NCPC's goals, but it's always got that caveat that's, you know, in balance with mission and intent, or, you know, there, it's like, okay, yeah, we're going to try to meet this, but, you know, it's, 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 you know, we're not going to meet it if, for some reason, we think that we need more parking. I mean, it's, it's kind of what it comes down to. I don't think that there's enough attention being paid to where people work and how people get there. And I think that that's, you know, that's sort of the big-picture thinking. I think that's the thing that we're starving for on this commission when it comes to how federal facilities are planned, when they are planned in these suburban locations. We need to understand more about what goes into the thinking there, so that we know that it's, that it's being done well. I mean, we've had, we've had a handful of, you know, poor sighting decisions that have been made because of the, you know, the sort of convenience of certain decisions, right? We have this land over here, you know, we could build it in a more centrally-located, more urban spot where more people can get to it, but we don't own that land. So let's put it over here and cut down the woods that we already own. There's something wrong with that mindset, and I want to see, you know, what is going into the thinking. Again, I, I'm not ruling out the possibility that the development that may have been proposed here could be proven to be the best decision. But what we are seeing now is clearly not demonstrating that. I also think, I'm, I'm very frustrated by, you know, the situation with the, you know, the connector bus that were, you know, that, that made the shuttle bus no longer possible. The shuttle bus was a good solution, and people were using it. And then the connector was introduced, and that meant the shuttle had to go away. And the use of the connector doesn't, isn't close to what the shuttle was. There's, and, and, oh, you know, your, your hands are tied because department policy doesn't allow you to run shuttle buses when there is that public transportation option. So that's not where the conversation should end, right? There either needs to be made, you know, you need to have the discussions that are necessary to change the timing of the connector so that it works for you. Or we need to talk to the county about taking away the connector so the shuttle buses come back. Because the point is to get people to work without making them rely on their cars. And that should be it, it should not be, well, you know, our hands are tied by this policy. It shouldn't stop there. So I'm not sure, let's see. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that one of the things that we'll also want to understand is, in, in a finer brain, is when we get to that point, would be the existing parking utilization within the, the complex. Because we certainly don't want to see additional parking constructed when the existing facilities, we don't want additional parking construction if the existing facilities are at, you know, 60% of capacity, 90% of the time. You know, so we, we need to understand that, to understand the, the need. Again, I, you know, I will trust that my fellow Commissioner, Commissioner McMahon will help Fort Belvoir and all of the, the Department of the Army, everybody who's involved in this, move toward a better goal. But I do think that we should not minimize the amount of rethinking that's necessary to make this successful. So, thank you very much, and apologies for a lengthy speech.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Commissioner Argo.
Well, Commissioner May, it may have been lengthy, but then it makes it also, since you touched on such, so many important points and kind of the core of the concerns that most of us probably have about this presentation, it makes it easier for us to not, to not necessarily have to, have to repeat your, you know, your, your summary and your, and also your passion about what is, let me say, and think, wrong with this, with this presentation, which it feels almost like it would be like preliminary, like it, you know, I wasn't ready. So I'll associate myself with those, with those comments. And I'm, I'm thinking, I jotted a few notes, but I think that they've, that they've been covered. And, and I'll leave it at that and pass it on to my fellow commissioners at this point, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Commissioner Wright.
Oh, God, I'm glad I didn't go first. Well, I have a couple of things to say. I want to congratulate Stephanie for her diplomatic skills. I, I'm, I think this plan is breathtakingly awful. And, and I don't understand why one would, would promulgate a worst-case scenario as a preferred alternative. That's just, I, I just don't understand that. And how, how is that, I mean, you want to leave, it sounds like the intent is to leave, you know, guidelines for whoever ends up here. But I, I would think that you would want to leave aspirational guidelines. I've been very critical of Fort Belvoir in the past for its architectural design, which seems to be, you know, aspire to look like Best Buy and other big-box stores. And now, I, now we're, in terms of planning, seem to be aspiring towards, you know, a suburban office park. I, I, I just, for the life of me, cannot understand the planning principles that went into this. I would also, but I would like to thank you because I think we've, we've sort of become unidimensional in our reviews of master plans of late. We get, we're obsessing over parking ratios. And I, and, and you've given us a lot of other things to latch on to now. I, I, and I've said this before, and I, I, I don't, I mean no disrespect, but the, the people who occupy these installations have really tough jobs. They, and they're, they're 24/7, under duress, under high, high-pressure situations, and doing some of the most important work. And, and because all of those things are true, they deserve better from their leaders and planners and people who are responsible for these installations. I, I just better stop there because my diplomatic skills are not as good as Ms. Freeze. So I, I would just urge that, that some very deep thought go in, go into this. We're all experiencing the effects of climate change, it's here. And to just level a forest indiscriminately so that you can, as, as Mr. May referred to them, as pancake buildings with surface lots, it's, it's, it's just disrespectful of the landscape when it doesn't need to be. I'm not, I don't, it's not that I believe you, you can build a high-rise out there and take up, I, I get that. But certainly, there are, are better, there are better ways to approach this project. And I hope that you will take the EDR as it's written, which I think is, nails it, and, and really consider its contents because it's thoughtful and it's diplomatic. And it, it, and, and I think it may be too diplomatic, so I will just repeat again. This is really awful. And it needs to be, more effort needs, and thought needs to be put into it.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Yeah, I don't need to add to the comments, but I will say, when you do come back, and I, I think you are going to come back with something different, that there'd be some inclusion of the use of solar. I don't want to become a broken record on this, but I guess I just have to keep saying it. Maybe at some point it'll appear in the EDR when it's not spoken too loudly in the presentations. But I hope you will use whatever you do to, to combine the use of solar as much as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Thank you. Not to belabor a lot of the points that have come up because I think that there is a, a lot of kind of going back to, to the drawing board and, and rethinking some of these issues. But I will belabor slightly the, the parking issue that I brought up. So I mean, it's, it's just kind of jaw-dropping when I look at these, these maps. I know that this is conceptual, but we are dedicating more space, more land to a parking structure for a building that looks like it's about a third of the size of the parking structure. So I mean, that, there's just, I understand that we are making up for a bunch of the, the unpaid surface lots that, that are there now. And you're saying that, that, oh, we have these conferences coming through. I would urge that conferences coming through, the security, the secure thing to do would be bust them in on buses and pop them off. Don't let them all park there. And the only other thing I'll say is, is in the future massing that I saw where it has kind of the ring of parking structures along Keller Road, it was in the, the submission materials and it made it into the EDR, but it actually says that the parking structures provide a visual impediment to the campus promoting security of mission and personnel. I think this is the first time I've ever heard of a parking structure described as a security feature for something. And I mean, it's blocking the view from a road that backs up to more wood. So that just seems like we're creeping into something where parking garages can now be a security aspect. And I just, I hope that that does not continue down the line. In this case, I think that it's kind of a red herring. So I think there's a lot more work that needs to be done. And, and just looking at the sheer number of parking that is contemplated for the worst-case scenario, I think that, that a lot more thought needs to go into the transportation management, into looking at more connector buses. I mean, we're, we're close to a lot of transit here, so I just want to kind of put that, that finer point on the parking issue. So thank you.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Chang is no longer at the meeting. So we will move to Commissioner True Blood.
Thank you. You know, I think there's a lot that's been said, and I, I support all of that. You know, maybe in the effort of, of, of an olive branch, I would actually make a suggestion towards the EDR. There's, there's language in there, let me just pull it up, about specifically, oh, no, where do, oh, sorry. Study the ability to raise building heights to the existing tree line to increase density while continuing to screen the buildings from nearby residential uses. This reminds me a little bit of some of what Commissioner May brought up in the previous discussion with FDA. I wonder if we want to be so limiting on building heights here. I, I think the building heights, you know, I understand to screen to residential, so that can be a point. But many of these buildings are not near residences and not backing up necessarily to building, you know, to, to the, to the edge of the, of the campus. So I would suggest that building heights, maybe we could, we could make other determinations for how high they should be and encourage not pancake buildings, but encourage, you know, a little bit more dense, taller buildings in, in, in the appropriate places.
Commissioner True Blood, do you want an amendment to the EDR to reflect that flexibility instead of being so specific to the tree heights?
Sure, we can see, I, I mean, I, I wonder if, if other, if other commissioners think that that might be useful. You know, I don't, I, I understand the importance of tree height, so I'm not trying to do that. But I do think not limiting would be important too. So maybe, I'm gonna, I'm not as good as Commissioner May at on the, that, at live editing these things. So I'm just trying to look at the language.
Make a suggestion then?
Please do, yes.
So we're looking at page four of the EDR, the bullet points, and it's the fifth bullet point. I think all you need to do is cross out to the existing tree line.
Sure.
And then, then it's just raise building heights to increase density while continuing to screen buildings from nearby residential uses.
I think that sounds great to me.
I would totally support that.
Okay, so then I guess I, well, so, yes, is that something we should, we should, we can move at the end of the, of the discussion potentially?
Yeah, I was just going to say, why don't we let Mr. Staudigal work on that as language for us and advise on the protocol, perhaps Ms. Geiler, how we want to amend that before moving approval? So if you give us a little guidance there, but why don't we finish over this, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, if I may, I don't have the EDR in front of me. Is the, is the pagination reference to a recommendation or EDR text?
This is recommendation.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine because it's not, EDR text is not available to be amended by the commission or the recommendations. So I'll work with Stephen and we'll, we'll, we'll get back to you.
Thank you so much. So Commissioner True Blood, I'm sure you had other comments for us besides the, the building heights.
I mean, I, I guess, there's not much to, I mean, other than belaboring of the points of my, the previous points of, of other commissioners, you know, I, I just, you know, one, I, I guess I'll make an observation, maybe as much for the commission as anything else. The preferred alternative as a worst-case scenario, I think, is something that we should maybe try and encourage applicants from, away from doing in the future. Our, our job is to review and approve hopefully a good case scenario master plan, understanding that in worst cases that things can be revised. We often get revisions and they are frustrating. But our point, our point is not to pass worst-case scenarios because that becomes the default scenario. And I, I just, I was a little bit, I mean, you know, you look at the three alternatives and it's like, oh, minimal, oh, a little bit. And then number three, preferred, is just, is, is incredible. So I really do, I appreciate Commissioner McMahon's comments, those are heartening. And I really appreciate his ability, I think, to help harness kind of some of what the commission feels about this. So I, I, other than to say I strongly support all of, all of the comments today, in front of me, I don't know if there's much more to add, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to offer a few comments, and in particular, thank you Commissioner McMahon for working toward an informational presentation that we could have a deeper discussion about how these decisions are made when looking at locating an agency on your installation versus a different installation. I do think it's a, it's a really important question for us to look at the entire ecosystem as we're evaluating these master plans. And one thing in particular that I, I would love to hear more about in an informational presentation is how will the DOD or individual installations really ramp up their efforts to address the, the priority of climate change? Our new administration has made that a priority, starting with Executive Order 14008. Our new administration has made that a priority, starting with Executive Order 14008, tackling the climate crisis at home and abroad, signed in January. And I think we need to be thinking about all of this campus planning that we review in that context. And the comments that you've heard pretty consistently from our commissioners about the worst-case scenario being presented as the preferred alternative from the get-go is troubling. And thinking about this forested area and green space and in this approach to planning a site, it's clear that they were never valued in the first place, other than as a building site. And that comes across pretty strongly, and that's a little disconcerting, to say the least. You've heard that pretty consistently. So, you know, we all very much appreciate that you need to accommodate the needs of the department and this site. But we'd really like to hear how this all fits into an examination of climate change and making that direct relationship to how you're treating this site. So that would be a really helpful thing as we move forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dixon?
To add to your concern, I know this gets to be a little redundant, but it seems like an afterthought. The solar concern, using solar, to my understanding, is at least one way to begin to replace the main reason for global changing, which is fossil fuel burning. So I don't see we can work, you know, your trees, oxygen, the trees, this, they are critical to me and all of us, but kind of find other ways to generate energy is at the heart of this discussion. So I don't see how we can avoid that. I mean, I know we're all tree huggers and we all been through that for years and saving forests and all, but there's a new technology out speaking at us, and we need to begin to incorporate that. I'm not asking for hydrogen, I mean, water energy or, I'm looking for simple ways to capture some of the, from some of the energy that's out there. So I think that should be given a little bit more play. I don't need to keep bringing it up, but thank you very much.
Well, I think you raise a really good point, reinforcing the need to look at these sites holistically and recognize the impact of climate change and what we're all trying to do together to address that. So I think that's additive. Commissioner Argo, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just, given this discussion, I'm just, I'm thinking maybe we might consider, and we may not want to do it right now, but we may want to consider a, some kind of directive to the staff as they review these plans in this context to take some of the comments that we've been making for guidance in the review of project submissions.
You mean with respect to looking at meeting the executive order around climate change?
Exactly, exactly.
That's a really interesting idea because we were, in my review of this sort of grappling with, how are we going to work together in taking a step back from this individual site? But as we look at all of these sites, how does that add up? What is our approach? So I think that's a really great suggestion. I see that both Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Acosta turned on their cameras. So obviously, they're giving this some thinking. I don't know, Mr. Acosta, would you like to go first?
Yes, and I, perhaps Ms. Sullivan can answer a lot of the questions. But we are required under the Executive Order Regarding Climate Change to produce a Climate Action Plan that would look at all the commissions or the agencies, various functions, and to identify opportunities to do exactly what you said. So we submitted a draft to CEQ that kind of looked at the FCIP, our Plan Review Process, and our Comprehensive Plan. And then we had to commit that we would review those things in the matter that you just spoke about. So that's going forward. We could certainly brief you like we're briefing you on our equity, Executive Order Response at a future meeting. But that is, we're undertaking that right now as a requirement of the Executive Order.
Perfect. Ms. Sullivan?
I want to ask you, how strong, how strong are we speaking to solar in it? Is that mentioned expressly in it or is it kind of lumped in as another possibility?
It's not, it's, to my knowledge, it's not specifically mentioned in solar. However, we're taking a look at, when we submitted that Climate Action Plan, OMB actually expressed a very strong interest in us sort of summarizing what we're seeing, which warms my heart. So we are going to be looking at renewable energy and solar just because we have so much of it in the comprehensive plan. So it also may not be the last executive order. So we'll see, we're tracking that as well, and we'll be prepared to respond to future ones. So, and actually, I think we will, would like to give an update to the commission on this later this year, towards the end of this year, on exactly what you're going to be seeing in our reports. So.
Kind of likely, when are they going to see us? I've been saying this now for how many meetings? And now we're thinking about possibly putting it in this report we're writing. So I'm here.
And we hear you.
Thank you. Well, that's heartening news. And as we grapple with these issues and go from project to project, I think that's going to help guide our efforts. So thank you for bringing great clarity to that question, Commissioner Argo. I really appreciate that. Sounds like we have a solid step forward. So with that, are there any other comments that the commissioners want to make on this agenda item? If not, Ms. Geiler, would you please advise on what our next step is procedurally?
Yes, ma'am. What I would suggest is that a move, a motion be made to amend the EDR as follows. On page four, under requests, the third bullet, remove the phrase to the existing tree line. You will then vote on that amendment. Then you will move to approve the EDR as amended.
That sounds great. Mr. Stodigal, do you have that? Do you have that motion captured? So is there, is there a motion to approve the amendment as offered by Commissioner Trueblood and read by Ms. Geiler?
Well, so can I move? I guess I would move that amendment as read by Ms. Geiler.
Correct.
I'll second it.
So Commissioner Trueblood moved the motion. Commissioner May seconded. Mr. Stodigal, could you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Okay. The motion would be to remove the phrase to the existing tree line in the third bullet on page four of the EDR. The motion was made by Commissioner Trueblood, seconded by Commissioner May. And for the vote to approve the amendment, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
And I know Commissioner Chang has left the meeting.
Thank you. The motion is carried. And now I believe we need a motion to move the EDR as amended for the comments on the draft master plan. Is there a motion? So moved. Thank you, Commissioner Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Mr. Stodigal, can you please confirm the motion in a second and take the vote by roll call?
The motion was made by Commissioner Argo, seconded by Commissioner May. Then Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Next is Agenda Item 7D, Approval of a Report to the Zoning Commission of the District of Columbia Regarding a MAP Amendment from RA-1 Zone to BF Zones for Various Lots at Squares 5862, 5865, 5866, and 5867. Before we hear from Mr. Hart, the NCPC staff person presenting this application, I would like to make a few general comments. This is a MAP amendment to create new zoning for Berry Farm, referred by the Zoning Commission. NCPC has an advisory role in this matter. NCPC has reviewed a planned unit development for the site in 2014 with essentially the same height and density focused on new affordable housing for the site. The proposed new zoning is very similar. As in 2014, the primary federal interest is related to historic preservation and urban design, in particular identifying any impacts to views from the St. Elizabeth's Campus located immediately to the west. Like the review in 2014, staff finds that the new zoning will not impact the campus. There is one public speaker who wishes to testify regarding the proposal, and their primary concern is related to displacement and the ability of current residents to return. The same comments were raised in 2014, while a very important issue, the EDR notes that affordable housing is an issue addressed in the district elements of the comprehensive plan and is handled through district process. And with that, I would like to turn to Mr. Hart.
Hopefully, you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Good. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission. The District of Columbia Zoning Commission has referred a MAP amendment for the commission's comments. This MAP amendment, as the vice chair said, is for the Berry Farm neighborhood, which is located in southeast Washington, DC. It's being presented today to allow a speaker who signed up to provide their testimony. Before I describe the MAP amendment, I wanted to provide some background. There are three types of zoning cases that the zoning commission refers to NCPC, and they're identified here. They are planned unit developments, or PUDs, which are large private development proposals which need special zoning commission approval and sometimes require zoning relief. There are text amendments, which are proposed changes to the DC zoning regulations. And there are MAP amendments, which are proposed changes to the DC zoning map. In this case, before you, is a MAP amendment. NCPC reviews these zoning commission referrals to determine whether they are consistent with policies within the federal elements of the comprehensive plan. There are basically two types of interests contained within the comprehensive plan, federal interests and national interests. With the federal interest category, this is really about protecting federal land, buildings, and operations. While the national interest category is focused on the form, character, and experience of the nation's capital, particularly within the historic Longfond City. So this brings us to the zoning map amendment for this development in southeast. This neighborhood is currently zoned RA-1, which is a low-density residential zone. And that's highlighted here. Here we have some surrounding context. There is the Anacostia Metro, which is just to the northeast. Due west is the joint-based Anacostia Bowling. And to the southwest is the Department of Homeland Security Headquarters, which is at the St. Elizabeth's Campus. I'll also note that I-295 runs to the west and to the north. And then Suton Parkway is also running to the north and then moves off to the east. So this is a closer look at the site. After the Civil War, this neighborhood was part of a freedman's village of formerly enslaved people. In the 1940s, a public housing development was created for African-Americans as housing in the city was segregated at that time. And that's actually what Berry Farm is. This housing development existed for decades until it was set for redevelopment in the early 2000s. What you see right here on this slide is a small area plan image on the left, which was created to show the future mixed-use development in this area. That plan was approved by the DC City Council in 2006. Most recently, the DC Historic Preservation and Review Board identified a portion of the housing area as a historic district. And you can see an outline of that here on the image in yellow. The proposed MAP amendment will designate the Berry Farm zoning districts, or BF1 and BF2 areas, which are shown on this map. The BF1 zoning districts, zoning districts will be located in the north and northwestern portion of the site. They're identified here in red. These districts allow for higher densities as well as greater heights, which are closer to I-295 and Suton Parkway. The maximum height in this red area is 65 feet. The BF2 zoning districts identified in blue are, will allow for less development and lower densities and lower heights. The maximum height here is actually 40 feet. Finally, as Vice Chair White described earlier, there was a separate zoning case in, that was ZZ, that was a PUD back in 2014 that looked at very similar development for this site. And I'll also note that there is a zoning case, ZZ 2021, that is a text amendment to create these new zoning districts in the zoning regulations. The associated development capacities are detailed here in this table. I was not going to read all of this. I just wanted to be able to show you the summary of the differences between the two districts. And I'll note that this table is actually included in the staff report for your reference. So as this MAP amendment will designate the new BF zoning districts, we identify the main federal interest as protecting views from the adjacent Department of Homeland Security Headquarters, in particular from a location on the campus referred to as The Point. You can see that identified here. This area is a promontory on the campus that affords long views of DC and was identified as an important aspect to preserve in the campus master plan. This is a view from the Point on St. Elizabeth's Campus from actually 2012. These long views are due to the fact that The Point is on the top graphic bowl. Staff determined that this MAP amendment was nearly identical to the previous first-stage PUD, which was also at this site, that was before the commission in 2014. Using topographical maps, excuse me, maps, and the development capacity information, we determined the proposed 65-foot building heights planned within the new BF zoning districts will not negatively affect the views towards the Longfond City. You're up so high, at this point, you can actually see over the buildings. This was the only federal interest that we identified. Finally, I'll note that you'll hear testimony from a speaker on behalf of Berry Farm residents that have been displaced pending the redevelopment of this area. As noted in the EDR, the federal elements address matters related to federal properties and functions and other federal and national interests in the National Capitol region. Housing is part of the district elements of the comprehensive plan and is addressed through the local review process. So it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission find the MAP amendments for various lots in squares 5862, 5865, 5866, and 5867 to allow a matter of right development consistent with the Berry Farm redevelopment plan is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr.? Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Hart? Hearing no questions. We do have one person signed up to speak. When I call your name, you may unmute, turn on your webcam, and begin your testimony. Mr. Daniel Del Piago, Organizing Director from Empower DC. Mr. Del Piago, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony. And I hope I pronounced your name properly. Apologies if I did not.
Very close, thank you.
Can you please pronounce it for me?
Sure. I'll repeat it here in my testimony.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Del Piago, and I am the Organizing Director with Empower DC. We have been working with Berry Farm public housing residents for years now and the planned redevelopment of their homes and neighborhood. There is no, there is a long history of public housing redevelopment resulting in widespread displacement of impacted residents. Studies have shown that few original residents return to their redeveloped properties. We urge NCPC to We urge NCPC to take interest in the plight of public housing residents who reside in federally funded facilities and are essentially tenants of the federal government. Berry Farm and public housing communities like it are federal facilities and therefore under NCPC's purview. The recent amendment to DC's comprehensive plan, the document which guides development and with which zoning must not be inconsistent, calls for a paradigm shift in how we make land use decisions. The comprehensive plan requires that a racial equity lens be adopted by the Office of Planning and the Zoning Commission and applied to planning and zoning decisions. That racial equity lens, according to the comprehensive plan, requires incorporating the following analysis of the actions and decisions. Identify and consider past and current systemic racial inequities. Identify who benefits or is burdened from a decision. Disaggregate data by race and analyze data considering differing impacts and outcomes by race and evaluate the program activity or decisions to identify measures such as policies, plans or requirements that reduce systemic racial inequities, eliminate race as a predictor of results and promote equitable development outcomes. These amendments stand to severely limit the ability of impacted residents, the vast majority of whom are Black, to engage in future proceedings pertaining the rebuilding of the property as developers would be able to proceed as a matter of right and without planned unit developments. Therefore, if we are to sincerely advance racial equity, it is critically important that the amendments represent the rights and privileges afforded to Berry Farm residents per the policy documents outlined below. We believe the text amendments that accompanies the map amendment should specifically reference the residents' rights to return to the property. As it stands, the amendment does require developers to report on the status of their effort to rebuild 380 replacement public housing units, but fails to require any reporting or recognition of the resident's right to return to these units, a report on the progress of their return, no other benefits outlined in the comprehensive plan. In the zoning regulations of 2016, in the subsection titled "Map Amendments", states that in order for a map amendment to be approved, it must not be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, public policies and active programs relating to the site, stating in all cases, the zoning commission shall find the amendments is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and with other adopted public policies and active programs related to the subject site. In the zoning regulation of 2016, in the subsection titled "Text Amendments", states that in order for a text amendment to be approved, it must not be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, public policies and active programs relating to the site, stating the zoning commission shall find the petition is not inconsistent with a comprehensive plan and with other adopted public policies and active programs related to the subject text. In the zoning regulations of 2016, subsection titled "Amendment to Create a New Zone", states that in order for a new zone to be approved by the zoning commission, the zone must not be inconsistent with a comprehensive plan and small area plans, stating proposed new zones shall not be inconsistent with a comprehensive plan or with applicable small area plans. DC's comprehensive plan calls for the self-governance and leadership of tenant groups to be respected and for partnerships to be formed to secure the future of the historic landmark. All of the provisions of the Berry Farm policy in the comprehensive plan must be reflected in the text amendment, and developers must be required to report on the progress towards these requirements when they apply for building permits. In order to ensure that Berry Farm and residents return to their homes, we must mandate transparency, reporting and accountability, which means that developers must be required to disclose who exactly is on the list to return, and residents must have something in writing that indicates that they are on the list. The Office of Planning and the Office of Zoning have admitted that they have yet to develop their racial equity approach, much less implemented. It is now the law for the comprehensive plan that these actions must incorporate a racial equity lens. As this decision will greatly impact hundreds of predominantly Black public housing residents, we urge NCPC to return this to the zoning commission with the direction to implement the racial equity requirement of the comprehensive plan, at which point NCPC can reconsider its approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Del Piago. Are there any questions from the Commissioners? This concludes the public testimony on this project, but I would like to thank everyone who has shared their testimony with us. I'll now open it up to the Commission for discussion. I will start with Commissioner Trueblood and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. Please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner Trueblood.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Hart, for the presentation and Mr. Del Piago for the comments from Empower DC. As the NCPC staff report shows, this project has no controversial issues related to the federal interest. And I think we noted that it would have been on the consent agenda had there not been a public commenter. So I do not see the need for the... I think somebody might be unmuted. So I don't see the need for the Commission to discuss this matter, which has been and will continue to be processed through the local process and will ensure compliance with all relevant laws. But I think, given that the next agenda item is about NCPC's work on racial equity, I did want to briefly point out how this project highlights a critical challenge that we as policy and planning practitioners face. Our comp plan, the District of Columbia's comp plan update, which went into effect in late August, includes additional new racial equity lenses that we will be applying to everything from planning initiatives to zoning to our capital improvement plan. This is valuable language, and we are currently determining how best to apply these lenses, especially in terms of zoning, but do not believe, and it's clear that the language is not intended to prevent zoning from happening in the meantime. I think this work is part of a broader effort across the district government under Mayor Bowser's leadership with coordination from the district's chief equity officer. Moreover, it is aligned with work happening in many US cities. In fact, I am excited to be able to share with this group next week a statement which was put together by planning directors across the country, acknowledging the planning profession's role in inequities and racial injustice and committed to proactively remedying these. This is essential and timely work for DC and NCPC, and I look forward to addressing it head-on. The Berry Farm Public Housing Redevelopment represents a critical example of how we move forward on racial equity. We see that racial justice in the context of planning and development necessitates moving quickly and deliberately to deliver on the needs of communities most impacted by past wrongs. Ensuring this critical mixed-use, mixed-income project delivers as soon as possible represents such a proactive step. This is especially true for a project that has been forced to be reduced in size multiple times, thereby cutting housing and affordable housing. And it's also been delayed numerous times, thereby preventing the return of longtime residents. In short, I think it's critical to understand that a racial equity lens must take into account the need for significantly more new and rehabilitated housing in the district and the region, and must also be about how we work within the constructs of our current financial and legal realities to ensure this new and rehabilitated housing can serve our residents and especially serve the needs of our Black and low-income residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood. Commissioner McMahon. Commissioner May. Any comments?
I have no comments, thank you.
Commissioner Argo.
No comments at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Wright.
I have no comments, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon.
Yes, I'd like to comment. First of all, I appreciate the comments made by the citizen. I have been watching this project. Well, actually, my home is legally in Berry Farms. So I've been living in Berry Farms, not in that particular project area, all my life. And I have watched this effort to try to improve that housing development for many years, troubled by the kind of conditions that some of my friends, classmates in elementary and junior high school and college had to live in because of the condition of the dwellings. I have been in touch with the local government on a regular basis as this process has developed and as the project has developed. I have been encouraging and urging, whatever strength I have, that the historical value and significance of that area, Berry Farms, be maintained, documented and historically recorded and presented in this project. I had been assured and was assured many months ago, years ago now, that that would be done. And at that point, there was to be one replica of the existing housing that would be part of a housing center or a central point by the recreation facility, which I used to go to as a kid. So I know the area very well. And that building would have been maintained with historical information about the area and people who had contributed from that area, et cetera. I was also very mindful of the actions by the Historical Preservation Committee. And I think that they made a major error in setting aside a larger portion of the property for historical restructuring of the old buildings. It eliminated the ability to put in more housing so we could accommodate more returning citizens and accommodate more new citizens who might come, who would be diverse potentially and represent and bring more strength to our community. I also am aware of a lot of the older residents who live there. Some of them are my friends. And I hope that they will come back. They have been trying to hold on to be able to come back, but the extended process of this spirit process, there's a lot of aging that's taking place, health conditions have kicked in. And if it had gone faster, they would have been able to come back sooner. So I regret that very much. I also hope that the measure of the concern is that those who live there now, or who lived there when they were living there, will come back. I hope they do. I have every promise, and I have been monitoring it and asking the question repeatedly of the city government, those in charge. Will this commitment be honored? And the answer is yes. Will there be facilities and buildings and structures made available for the families that come back? And the answer I get back is yes. And I do have some confidence in my government, my city. I'm not going to do a January 6 thing. I think this government has a commitment and will follow through. At least I intend to be around and make sure they do. And folks will be able to come back, if they choose to come back. One of the issues is that a lot of times folks choose not to come back. That's something we cannot control or dictate. But I want to be sure they have the option to, and I think they will. So I respect the concerns that have been raised, and I just hope that things will move as they should move and this goes forward. And I do believe that it has been fully addressed, probably better spoken to than I have now by the local government, the council and council people and the mayor's office in moving forward to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the thoughtful comments and background. Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Cash.
I'll just associate myself with comments of Commissioner Dixon and Commissioner Trueblood, and also just kind of underscore, as far as a process perspective, the local comprehensive plan did become law at some point in the last couple of weeks because Congress has been in session a lot longer than they normally are. So that would have been around somewhere around August 23rd. The new rules have kicked in. So I believe when this case was before the zoning commission, that did not yet apply. But I do want to thank Mr. Del Piago and everyone in Empower DC who are really responsible for lobbying the council on these issues, and especially with respect to Berry Farm and what we can learn from some of the missteps we've had over the past several years with this development and how we can build that into the planning process moving forward. So it was an incredible contribution, I think, in first comments here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the report to the Zoning Commission of the District of Columbia?
Don't move.
Don't move.
I couldn't hear. Okay, Commissioner Dixon moves, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Trueblood, who has seconded the motion. Mr. Stodigal, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the roll call?
Sure, the motion was by Commissioner Dixon, and the second was by Commissioner Trueblood. So then, Commissioner Trueblood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner May?
Yes, I'm going to abstain on this one, thank you.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion is carried. That covers our action items, and now we have one information presentation. Agenda item 8A is an information presentation on assessing equity in NCPC's practices and procedures. I believe Ms. Gabe is going to be presenting.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, I'm presenting on NCPC's approach for assessing equity in the agency's practices and procedures. Through its core work programs and partnerships with federal and local agencies, NCPC has been committed to advancing equity in the areas of federal land use, community and economic development, the environment, transportation, security and commemoration. The agency, however, can and should do more. You can go back to the last slide, Chris, thank you. I'll tell you in advance, thank you so much. The agency, however, can and should do more. Thanks to increased public discourse, there's also more awareness of the importance of advancing equity. The current administration is also championing equity and has issued new related executive orders. In this presentation, we'll be sharing a suggested agency approach for advancing equity that builds on our commitment and previous efforts and response to these executive orders. Next slide, please. The first executive order signed by President Biden when he took office was Executive Order 13985, which charges the federal government to pursue a comprehensive approach to advancing equity for all, including people of color and others who have been historically underserved. Next slide, please. Advancing equity requires that we all understand what equity is. I just first want to note that as a small agency, we don't have a dedicated or trained staff to work on these issues. The staff members taking the lead on developing NCPC's approach are working on educating themselves as well as identifying training and other resources that can best serve our agency. So we'll be using the federal government's definition of equity, which is the consistent and systematic fair, just and impartial treatment of all individuals, including people of color, members of religious minorities, people in the LGBTQ+ community, people with disabilities, those who live in rural areas and those adversely affected by persistent poverty or inequality. As you can see in this image, it's important to distinguish equity from equality, which is another term that's used widely. Equality means each individual or group of people is given the same resources or opportunities. Equity, on the other hand, recognizes that each person or group has different circumstances and allocates the resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. Next slide, please. Advancing equity at NCPC requires that equity be a central component of the decision-making framework that all agency functions are rooted through. And again, in this presentation, we'll be sharing our suggested approach that includes actions that are broadly suggested by Executive Order 13985, but go beyond its requirements. We'll also briefly address another related executive order on the federal workforce. At the end, we're happy to hear your thoughts and suggestions and answer any questions you might have. We'll take a look at the timeline on the next slide. The executive order was issued in January. In April and August, we submitted progress reports as required. And in January of next year, we will submit an equity action plan that outlines our approach and includes more findings on our work up to that point. What you see here is our overall approach, which is to identify who's being impacted by our policies, decisions, practices or procedures, to determine the extent to which our work has presented barriers to equity, eliminate those barriers and minimize any negative impact by updating our policies, decisions, et cetera, to ensure equitable treatment, and lastly, to evaluate the outcomes of those efforts regularly. Next, we'll look at the components of that approach, which you can see here. They include conducting an agency assessment, identifying or developing tools, training staff and commission members, and collecting and tracking data. I'll go into each of these four categories individually. So we'll first assess the agency's current work program and operations, which include our core programs, as you see listed here, and our various planning initiatives and studies. which include our core programs, as you see listed here, and our various planning initiatives and studies. This entails identifying impacted groups and assessing these programs, policies, and practices to ensure that they eliminate barriers and promote equity. We'll also assess our public outreach activities to ensure that the agency is identifying and meaningfully facilitating the participation of members of historically underserved communities. In terms of operations, we'll also assess the extent to which our internal and external service provision may present barriers to providing fair treatment or outcomes. We'll review procurement strategies, and we'll also assess agency recruitment and hiring practices to determine if there are approaches to hire and retain members of underrepresented groups. I'd like to just briefly call your attention to another related executive order, Executive Order 14035, which was issued more recently in June. It charges the federal government with strengthening diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility in its workforce functions, including recruitment, hiring, training, promotion, and retention. Our efforts to advance equity in agency operations in response to Executive Order 13985 will dovetail with this response as well. So we'll get back to discussing Executive Order 13985. After conducting an agency assessment, we'll look at how we can use tools for the review of future practices, policies, and initiatives. And I'll briefly discuss the possible scope. A common tool is an equity impact analysis. There are a number of local jurisdictions that have started to use them. Typically, the analysis is conducted at the start of a project review or planning study to inform the subsequent work. For plan and project review, for example, we know that other federal agencies have responsibilities under the same executive order to address equity. So we're exploring appropriate approaches within our review process to identify those issues with our applicants, possibly through the use of this impact analysis. For the comprehensive plan, we're suggesting conducting an equity impact analysis when undertaking updates to individual policy elements. For the FCIP, we've already begun to identify approaches in the review process to highlight equity considerations, including region-specific equity issues. Similar to plan review, since other federal agencies have responsibilities under this executive order, we will also seek to confirm if they have conducted equity analyses when preparing their capital requests. Our approach, oh, sorry, you can go back one slide. Thank you, Grace. Our approach will vary for our broad range of initiatives. Building upon our previous efforts to explore commemoration trends and expand subject matter representation, we'll continue that work, possibly through the use of different commemorative formats and temporary projects. As you all know, a key goal of our long-range strategy to revitalize Pennsylvania Avenue is to advance equitable and inclusive design, and we'll build upon that work as well. And lastly, we've prepared several plans and studies related to public space and security design. And we're currently working with our partners to provide updated guidance that supports equitable public space use and responses to evolving security threats. There are some important considerations to keep in mind in terms of using tools. As we've discussed, NCPC does not have a chief equity officer or dedicated team to do this work, unlike larger public agencies. So we would need to use staff resources, provide training, and develop these tools on our own, as well as consider if we can use external resources. Other agencies are subject to the same executive order, so we'll also determine how best to incorporate their efforts. Whether we use other agencies' tools or develop our own, we'll make sure to consider our mission and authorities. And we have done this before. For example, the comprehensive plan includes references to mapped equity emphasis areas developed by COG to identify regional inequalities in income and wealth. Training is critical for both the commission and staff on a general introduction to equity, regional issues related to NCPC's work, and the potential use of tools where appropriate. As we've discussed, we're exploring whether we can bring in outside resources to assist with training and tools. And lastly, there is data collection and tracking to support our efforts to measure and advance equity. Disaggregated data is critical to understand how different groups may be impacted differently by policies and programs. We don't develop a lot of data sets independently. However, it'll be helpful for us to use disaggregated data from other sources. The federal government is working on a number of important data sets. COG and the district are also working towards this, particularly around race and income. Any data that we do capture should disaggregate for equity considerations where appropriate. So that concludes an overview of our preliminary approach for addressing equity in NCPC's work. What's next is that we'll continue to conduct research and coordinate with other federal and regional agencies. We'll convene a core staff team to refine the approach and launch training efforts for the commission and staff. And we're hoping to start a few training activities in the fall. And in January, we'll submit NCPC's equity action plan to the OMB. At a future date, we'll also be able to share findings on the efforts of our work. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. A few of my colleagues working on this might chime in as well. And thank you again, Grace, for your help.
Thank you so much. So are there any questions for staff on this very important initiative? Commissioner Trueblood?
Maybe more of a comment and an offer, which is, you know, I think a couple of things, especially when we start thinking about recruitment and hiring. You know, I think the planning profession, like many others, I think suffers from challenges around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we've been thinking about how we can better support a pipeline of planners into the industry, working sometimes in college, sometimes trying to get even deeper into high schools, you know, in the city. So we would, there may be opportunities for us to collaborate on that. But I guess my bigger comment, you know, it's interesting to put this in the context of the federal government. I think within, it's sort of, it's similar to a conversation I had with our chief equity officer that I think planning has a particular mandate and a particular history that really speaks to the issues of equity and racial equity. I hope most folks have heard of or read Richard Rothstein's The Color of Law. It actually has some DC examples and I think some NCPC examples. Many of you are familiar with Harold Bartholomew, the father of zoning and a noted racist. But also work that NCPC did in the past that we've inherited around Fort Reno and the displacement of an African-American community there, Federal Triangle and Southwest Urban renewal. So I think we all have, you know, it's important for us to recognize where we've been to see that it's not only about understanding, but it's about what can we proactively do to remedy some of these issues. And so I think it's important. And it's great that you're in the federal government, too. In some ways, I think you might be able to provide tools to other agencies to think about their own work that may not be as directly clear in terms of the previous racial impacts of decisions in the past. So I'm excited by it. And I'll just say, we are here, we are, Office of Planning is here to be supportive and work with you however we can through that.
Wonderful. If there are no other questions, why don't we start with comments with Commissioner Dixon following Commissioner Trueblood's great offer there?
Yeah, I keep my mic slide. I think you saw that, Madam Chair. Yeah, I've got a lot of concerns about this. I think we all do. It's complicated because it's so ingrained, I mean, procedures and policies and practices that it's sometimes hard to get away from the, out of the forest and get into the trees to see what really is going on. In that light, I want to make a point that I think one of our first PUDs done in Anacostia was done by a junior high school class. And that PUD has been actually fulfilled. It is coming, it's actually happening the way they saw it. This goes back 20 years when they did this with the work of some people at GW, working with students, young students. So there's potential if we just reach and gather them. Might be an indication that we might have some youth involved at the commission who can begin, who have an interest to begin feeling what we do at an early age. Wouldn't hurt to have a few around in some capacities as maybe interns, youth interns, if we can work it out. The other thing I mentioned long, I spoke with Mr. Trueblood about this and some others, others, many others, actually, about the survey that COG did a few months ago. It was very thorough and well done, but it gave a skewed presentation of what the district is all about. I'm sure it made the incumbents proud and happy to see it, except for those of who may have come from areas that didn't really reflect those stats. East of the River in particular, in my community, I call R, Anacostia River East, the R community. And I'd ask that the survey, that same exact survey should be conducted with the population of those people who are in R and see how they differ from the regional survey that came out very glowing in terms of where we are, to let people know that these distinctions are great and this is a, these distinctions may give us guidance as to what we need to do. So I just mentioned that. I also have been concerned and I think there's been effort to be sure that the contracting that we do as a commission tries to be inclusive and tries to bring along some emerging talent that could work with some of the the big guys who've been at this for years, doing the presentations to us on certain issues. And I think that that, we could encourage it. We probably can't dictate, but we could encourage that. I also think, you know, I like, the words that we have are great. And you have to be able to articulate to be able to get things done. But I want us to, as they say, don't say something, do something. So I hope that we can find ways through our actions, not just to say things with broad strokes about environment without saying solar. Let's get down to it and talk details about what can be done, what should be done. Let's act, let's make action statements, not just the glowing general solve statements, solve statements, which I don't think are good. At any rate, that's kind of where I am now, but I want to be certainly, hopefully, able to help and participate in this in a constructive, positive way, which is hopefully my style. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dixon.
I also want to add, if I might, I was the author of the first minority contracting legislation in the District of Columbia in 1975, or earlier, to set aside. And it's gone up and down, but that was the beginning of it. And I kind of wish I could have benefited, I could benefit from it as a small business person. I haven't. At any rate, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Thanks so much for the presentation. I think this is really important issues that we're talking about. I'll look forward to the commission starting after this is in effect, integrating this more into our decision-making and into, as we're looking at the EDRs and everything. And I'll just note the council for the last year, we put our own racial equity office in. We have racial equity impacts assessments now for every bill that we pass that came up. You all would have heard about it, the comp plan, when we were taking a look at that. But it's been a useful new tool to move forward with. So I hope that it will be equally valuable here as well.
And I don't want to go on, Madam Chair, but I have to say, this is not a matter of trying to make include. This is a matter of talent that is there and available that we need to have. It's information that we need because the information that certain communities have is very different than the information that others have. And we see this a lot in our, in lots of our lives, how things, if we just knew that, if we had understood that, we could have all been better off because of it.
Understood. Commissioner Trueblood, do you have additional comments you'd like to make?
I just want to apologize for taking the question time to make a comment. So apologies to you, Chair White, as well as you, Commissioner Dixon, for getting in front of your comments, but I.
No apology needed. You sparked a great conversation. Commissioner McMahon?
Good presentation, important issue. Appreciate it. Looking forward to next steps from the commission. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner May?
Yes. First, I just want to extend apologies from Commissioner Wright, who just sent me a text message saying that she had to leave at 4:30, but that she does look forward to hearing more and having more conversation on this topic. She recognized the importance of it and wants to hear more. For me as well, I mean, this is an issue that our agency has been addressing as well. There are many aspects of it that are vitally important to the National Park Service. And I mean, I have been in discussions on this topic almost every week for about 15 months, 16 months. We've had one conversation or another. We are making our own plans on how to address equity within the parks and within our ranks and look forward to seeing how this plays out in the NCPC realm. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
I have no further comments. I agree with all the previous speakers. And I am just beyond happy that this is something that we're going to address and grapple with and in our own business here with the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. One, in listening to everyone and knowing that folks are grappling with this at all kinds of levels, I think it would be really useful if you have materials, suggestions that you could share with us as we take on this effort. And I really appreciate, there is not a dedicated person at the staff level. The staff is doing this in addition to their other work. And I think it's so important to work as a collaborative team and share sort of the best examples, also the biggest challenges we've had. And, you know, contemplating whether this could be the subject of a retreat to really think about, how do we support this effort given our limited resources and our budget? But there are other ways that we can do this. I know our organization at Houston Parks Board, we've been undertaking a staff equity task force, working alongside our board, looking at our internal policies and procedures. And as soon as that's wrapped up, I'm going to forward that on, you know, for offer of any insights, but also a request for any kind of feedback. So Commissioner Cash, Commissioner Trueblood, Commissioner May, you mentioned you're already doing this work. I think it would be really great to bring it to the table. I also think about outside speakers, and I'm glad Commissioner Trueblood mentioned Richard Rothstein. I've heard him speak on this, and The Color of Law is a really, really fascinating and impactful view of systemic racism that we're all struggling with. So I just, my mind is racing with all kinds of opportunities for how to to help the staff really keep this on track and work together with the board. So with that, I ask that people think about how we can share resources on this and keep it moving. So I want to thank again Ms. Roth, your great work and leadership on this. I see Commissioner Trueblood has turned on his camera. Was there something you'd like to add?
Maybe just very briefly in terms of resources, I mentioned there's going to be a statement, racial equity statement that the planning directors are putting out. But in doing so, we worked with the American Planning Association, which has a pretty good resource page. So either maybe we can make that available or even make suggestions from that for the commissioners or decide if there's something that we want to talk about in a retreat. But there are some good resources out there, especially as it relates to planning that might be relevant for us.
That would be great. And the American Planning Association spoke out about this very early on. You know, obviously, we have a great resource in Commissioner Dixon, who's been doing this work for decades. So we want to really take advantage of the incredible resources we have on our commission. So thanks, everyone, for your willingness to support this effort. So with that, that concludes our open session agenda. The commission will meet next on Thursday, October 7th at 1:00 PM. If there's no other business, the open session is now adjourned. And I wish everyone a good holiday break over Labor Day weekend. Thank you so much.